Mr. Shelby, could you please read the rules for Tampa City Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. These are the rules of decorum for the conduct of today's meeting. Members of the public are allowed a reasonable opportunity at the beginning of today's meeting to address any item on the agenda before the City Council takes official action on an item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. Now, if you're here to speak at general public comment, which begins after the ceremonial items this morning on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and place it in the box that's outside the chambers. One card per speaker. Cards will be expected until the start of general public comment. Each person submitting a card will be recognized by name to approach and speak. Names that cannot be read will not be called. Please print legibly. Now, if you're here to speak at a public hearing, those are marked on the agenda as such, "public hearing." You don't use the speaker card. You use the signing sheet by the podium outside instead. Now, if you need assistance, please see the city staff. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded that they are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks, or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds, or displaying signs or graphics. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the City Council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the council's rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. Now, please know that if it's something on the agenda that's listed as a consent item or for staff reports, the time to speak on those items is going to be at the start of the meeting during general public comment. And finally, city council members should refrain from engaging a speaker under public comment. And the public should be aware that the City Council does not take questions or have a dialogue with you during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Sir, in the white and black t-shirt against the wall, I rule that you are out of order. I'll give you an opportunity to leave the chambers and reverse your t-shirt, and then you can re-enter the chamber. If you do not wish to take up on that opportunity, I'm going to rule your behavior out of order and ask you to leave the chamber.
I give you an opportunity to call your...
And, Mr. Chairman, if you can. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, did you do roll call yet?
I have not yet. I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. Clerk, can you call the rule? Roll.
Miranda?
Here.
Metiscoco?
Here.
Hertech?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Plendenin?
Here. Thank you.
So, sir, I'm sorry. Once again, I'm going to give you an opportunity to leave the chambers, reverse your t-shirt, and then come back in. If not, I'm going to rule you out of order. Sir, you're out of order. Please leave council chambers. Okay. Sir, may I direct the officer to remove this gentleman from the chambers for the remainder of today's proceedings? Thank you. Yeah, I would like to call a 10-minute recess. I'd ask city staff and clerk, the attorney, and city council to leave the chambers for 10 minutes, and we will return and resume operations. I'm sorry for the folks that are here waiting for this. We will see you all in 10 minutes. Thank you. All this Tampa City Council to order. Roll call vote, please.
Miranda?
Here.
Metiscoco?
Here.
Hertech?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Plendenin?
Here.
Okay, I would like Councilman Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my great pleasure to introduce the gentleman who will be doing the invocation for us, Lieutenant Colonel Will Atkins. Colonel Atkins is a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel who served 22 years as a C-130 navigator and political military advisor, including six deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan, and teaching American government and national security at the U.S. Air Force Academy. Colonel Atkins now lives in Tampa, New Tampa, with his wife and daughter, and remains committed to public service. He serves on the boards of the New Tampa YMCA and North Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, and is currently in training to serve as a mentor for a Veterans Treatment Court here in Hillsborough County, supporting fellow veterans in their path to healing and reintegration. And Colonel Atkins just did the prayer for Purple Heart, so he's doing it now. So, he's our Billy Graham today. So, and then he's going to do the pledge, so remain standing. Stand if you would, and remain standing. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads. God, we gather today in service to the people of Tampa, a city rich in culture, full of promise, and driven by the spirit of community. Grant this council wisdom in its deliberations, compassion in its decisions, and the courage to lead with integrity and purpose. May each choice made here serve the greater good of every neighborhood, every voice, and every family. And, Lord, since we know that all things are possible through you, perhaps you could send a little love to the Tampa Bay Rays. Bless this city, our leaders, and all who call it home. Amen. To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about a little love for the Buccaneers, their first preseason game this Saturday night?
I understand you got cut.
Yeah, my bones aren't up for that these days. Okay, so, are we online? We're not seeing it on the monitors. Okay, okay. The overhead displays, can y'all... CCTV, the overhead displays in the council chambers, if you can get the live stream up there, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, I would like to hear a motion to receive and file minutes for the regular session held July 31, 2025. I have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Metiscoco. I have a motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Metiscoco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you so much. Okay, agenda review, please. We've got several items.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I didn't, if I may, sir, I didn't send a memo on this. I have an event in Plant City for an organization. I've served on the board for 15 years, and I'll probably need to leave around like 11:25. So, just FYI, there may be some items. I don't think there will be, but just FYI.
Okay. Oh, you'd be gone for the rest of the day?
Oh, no, no. I'll be back. Oh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. One item, Chief Bennett would like to do the administrative update immediately following the commendations to ATU. Is that unanimous consent? Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see. I need a motion to accept the resolution for item number 15. It was a Scrivener's error. I have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Metiscoco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to, I already sent a memo to pull item 20, and I want that heard first on staff reports, and I do want staff.
Okay, you have a motion from Councilman...
Fire and Lamb, and preferably Chief of Staff.
You have a motion from Councilman Hertech, a second from Councilman Viera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Okay, I think that is... For, can we continue an item that was in a public hearing at this time? Or do we have to...
Public hearing? No.
Okay, very good. Didn't think so. Just making sure. Okay, staff reports. We already had the administrative update. We did...
Yes, on 52.
52 on yes. Okay.
Staff on 52?
Yes. Okay, 53.
If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, and I would request, obviously, that I be here for this one on returning citizens in the office of, and obviously, an in-person report, if I may.
Okay, Viera needs to be there. Okay. 54.
Yes.
55.
We need to continue to September 25, 2025.
And let me just speak quickly on this, because this is my motion. And the reason we're continuing it is because there are some issues with SB 180, so we're kind of tying it into that workshop that we already agreed to do on SB 180. So, that is the reason for the continuance.
Well moved. I have a motion from Councilman Metiscoco, a second from Councilwoman Hertech. Councilman Hertech, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, eyes have it. Okay, item 56. Councilman Viera?
Yes, sir, I'd like that in person. I've spoken to Ms. McKenzie on it yesterday. And again, I obviously would request to be here for that.
Okay, item number 57.
Yes, and goes with 58.
Yeah, 58 is a yes as well. Okay.
Item 59, to be continued?
We need to do 57 before, I'm sorry, 58 before 57, FYI.
Okay. I move to continue item 59 to September 4. There is no update, because they're still in the middle of writing.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Hertech, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. 60, a motion to continue to October 23.
So, move.
I have a motion from Councilman Hertech, a second from Councilman Metiscoco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, eyes have it. Thank you.
Move to receive and file all written, 61 through 65.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file. Items 61 through 65. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Okay. And that, I believe, is finished on the agenda review. Okay. Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Hertzack. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, okay, Councilman Vera, please.
Everybody, good to see everybody again. We're here for Officer of the Month, and I will let Chief Burkhoff talk about this individual, whoever he or she may be. It's a unique Officer of the Month, and we always do this, again, to reflect the values of the community that we serve, that always supports our first responders, including our police officers and cops, so Chief, go, sir.
Good morning, Council, Chief Burkhoff. It's an honor to be here to present our Officer of the Month. Today, we are recognizing Officer Curtis Brials as the Tampa Police Department's Officer of the Month for August 2025. Since he is still in his undercover role, and his operations are still ongoing, here to accept on his behalf as his Sergeant, Sergeant Matt Zalansky. Earlier this year, as part of our continued efforts to address drug activity in key areas of the city, Officer Brials volunteered for one of the most challenging roles in the operation by conducting undercover narcotic buys. This high-risk assignment required exceptional courage, vigilance, and quick judgment. From February through April of this year, Officer Brials successfully completed more than 45 narcotic purchases from 29 different individuals. These efforts resulted in warrants and arrests for each of them. Many of these offenses occurred near schools, churches, and other protected locations. The individuals he targeted were not minor offenders. Nineteen of them had previously served time in the Florida State Prison, totaling over 100 years of incarceration for serious crimes, including drug trafficking, armed robbery, firearm violations, and aggravated assaults. Several were also serving active probation or community control at our time. Officer Brials worked directly, contributed, his efforts contributed directly to improving public safety and removing dangerous repeat offenders from our streets. His actions reflect the highest standards of professionalism, dedication, and service to our community. For somebody to do this, put their lives on the line to make our community safer, and take dangerous felons off the street, we are proud to recognize Officer Curtis Brials as our Officer of the Month for August 2025.
And now, we have a lot of folks here, starting with the PVA, to honor this officer who is here in spirit. Glad, everyone, sir.
Morning, Council, Brandon Barclay, Tampa PVA. We just want to present this plaque to the officer for a job well done.
Thanks. Happy to come, he's the Els and family, please pass along our gratitude to his courage and what he's doing for us, and he's making us safer, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, when y'all are speaking, just so you know, the microphone is inside the podium, so if you could face the podium and get closer to it, so the people.
Okay, we can do that. Good morning, Council, good morning, Sergeant. I'm Grace Gonzalez, I'm here on behalf of the Gonsmart family and the 1905 family of restaurants. Please thank your team, thank Officer Brials for us. This is a gift card for him to enjoy, a night with his family, flamenco show, sangria, ulalay, wherever he'd like, but thank you for your commitment, thank you for his commitment to our city, thank you for being here, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, good morning. My name is Lori Osborne, and I'm with the Florida Orchestra, and on behalf of the Florida Orchestra, we'd like to thank both you and Officer Brials for his heroism and keeping our city safer. We really appreciate it, and we would like to invite he and his family to an upcoming performance for the orchestra during our season.
Perfect, thank you.
So, please give that to him, and thank you again.
Thank you again, ma'am.
Good morning, Mary Dillon from Strass Center, thank you. Thank you for having, nominating the officer on behalf of this Strass Center, tickets to an upcoming performance, and thank you so much, can convey our congratulations.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here representing the zoo today, I'm new on the board, and this is for the Officer of the Month, this is a year past, year membership for the officer and officer's family, and the animal is the Florida panther, because they're stealthy, so that was them.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Leo Gary with Bill Curry Ford. Curtis, congratulations, just let him know that we say thank you so much.
I will.
From Bill Curry Ford. I've met him multiple times, so I know who he is. This is a handwritten letter from Jennifer Curry herself, with a gift card, a full free maintenance on his personal vehicle certificate, and then there's some other pieces. And like I always say, every single time I'm up here.
Remember, we can't hear you if you're facing, we can't hear you.
I respect and appreciate every one of you guys that puts on that uniform every single day. It's truly an honor for me to be here, every single month to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it's awkward to like face forward when you're addressing people in the back, but they can hear when it's booming out if you face forward. Mr. Ford.
Good morning, good morning, Council, thank you, I left something up there, and thank you, it's our 50th season, so I just wanted to pass that along, thank you very much. Good morning, Chief. Good morning, yes, you got that too. Been with this guy since 98 there. On behalf of the Glazer family, you know the tradition we have, you've been part of that, and anybody that goes over and above gets a game ball, and your partner hearing his story, and what you guys do each and every day to keep our community safe, the sacrifice that your family, it's unparalleled, so if anybody deserves a game ball, it's you and your partner, but please pass that along.
I will.
And on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, thank you for leading, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Morning, Council, Mike McArthur, Steps Towing Service, and on behalf of Todd Step and Steps Towing, we'd like to congratulate Officer Brials with a gift card and have dinner out a night on Steps Towing, and just let him know that we appreciate everything he does for our city.
I will, I'll relay that, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council, City Staff, Chief Burkhoff. My name is Mary Beth Williams, I'm Executive Director of Friends of the Riverwalk. We'd like to express our appreciation to Officer Brials and present him with a personalized granite paper along the Tampa Riverwalk, should be ready, 30, 60 days, we'll let you know when it's ready. In addition, I have a few items from our, some of our board member organizations, a gift certificate to Florida Avenue Brewing, a gift certificate to an adult party at Splitsville, two, dinner for two yacht starship, Pirate Water Taxi, two all-day passes, Lost Pearl, two complimentary admissions, and a gift card to Hidden Springs Ale Works.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Michelini, I'm here on behalf of a variety of folks who'd like to honor the officer, and I can tell you that these are no-nonsense folks. I've seen them in action, and I greatly appreciate, and I'm sure everyone else does, what they do to keep us safe. On behalf of these different businesses, the Meat Market in Old Hyde Park, providing gift certificate, Jackson's Bistro over on Harbor Island, the Chicho Restaurant Group, Up and Down Howard, take your pick, and Yummy House China Bistro, so we greatly appreciate all that's being done for our community. Get the bad boys off the street, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
It's good to see you, Steve Michelini. Glad you're out and about, good to see you.
And here, sir, and so, sir, we always end with a man with a red tie, and it is our great pleasure, on behalf of a very grateful city of Tampa, to honor your colleague, who you obviously are here for, for all of his hard work and determination and courage. Here you go. Thank you, sir. And if you want to say some words, remain in that place. If you want to say, you cool? Okay. A man of humility, Council.
I saw Councilman Miranda first, is it?
We just want to say thank you for doing a job every day, in and out, for the officer who's risking his life, he or she, in this moment of life, over 1,000 officers that we have, you got a hundredth of a second to make a decision, I can imagine the position that this officer is in, when he knows what he's dealing with, goes out and finds them, locates them, and then makes a buy. And, you know, I don't know what's wrong with the world, more drug dealers, because we have more drug users. If we have any, no drug user, you wouldn't have any drug dealers, or you could say it the other way around, but it's a two-way street, and I want to thank this officer and the whole police department, all of you, your chief, and the second-in-command that I'm looking at her, say thank you for the job that you do without being recognized, as you've taken this responsibility to help the citizens of wherever city you serve. God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Congratulations to the officer, your colleague, for keeping us safe. We appreciate the sacrifice, and what this officer is doing, and the community has done and continues to do, so congratulations, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On behalf of this Tampa City Council, you know, the City Council supports you and your sisters and brothers that wear the badge, we're very appreciative of what you do for the city of Tampa, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, brief pause, let the folks leave. Councilwoman Hertzack. Councilwoman Hertzack.
Good morning, everyone, I am here for the ATU Employee of the Month, very excited, I'm gonna...
Face the podium, please.
Just waiting for everybody to come on up. Okay, who's taking the lead here today? Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Council, and good morning, city of Tampa. I'm Steve Simon, I'm the president of the Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1464, and we keep the city of Tampa running, and I'm happy to be here this morning to introduce to you the ATU Employee of the Month, Ms. April Grant. April is a customer service representative within the Water Department, and has been an invaluable asset to her team. Her consistent willingness to support both her immediate team members and colleagues across departments has made a significant impact on our operations. She approaches each challenge with a strong eagerness to learn and a proactive attitude in applying newly acquired knowledge to enhance workflows. April has demonstrated a strong commitment to collaboration and problem solving. She frequently goes the extra mile to help uncover and address the missing pieces needed to move forward. Her efforts have made her a reliable and respected resource throughout the meter operation. Notably, April played a major role in cleaning and vetting records and streamlining the chamber replacement program scheduling process, efforts that helped us reach our annual goals. Her dedication continues to enhance efficiency and strengthen teamwork across all levels of the operation, and we thank you, April, we appreciate your participation in doing what you do to keep the city of Tampa running, and so therefore, on behalf of ATU Local 1464, I would like to present you with this award. And I'd also like to say thank you, Councilwoman, and also, I would like to turn it over to Water Department Director of Operations Eli Franco to say a few words.
Thank you, Stephen, good morning, Council. Just step right here, there. When I think of April, the word that comes to mind is sponge, someone that is always not only focused on the task at hand, but what's next? What else can I learn? How else can I contribute? She joined the water team about five years ago, started out in the call center, and that's not an easy assignment to break into the biz, but she handled it very well, an opportunity came up within the last year to move into the operations side of our business, she moved over there and brought the same spirit of I want to learn, and I want to learn more. So, on behalf of Rory Jones, the department director, who could not be here this morning, but who handpicked everything that's in this bag, and all the members of the water team, congratulations for being nominated and selected, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
So, now we have some people in the community who would like to honor you with some things. I've got, I'll go, I'm the zoo today, too, I'm double duty. So, this is for you for the zoo, this is six passes to enjoy the day at the zoo, and your animal is a manatee, of course, and a little tie-dye just for fun.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Dillon from Strass Center, congratulations, Ms. Grant, and on your award. First of all, this is my business card.
Thank you.
I will be sending you tickets very shortly and working through Kelly Scher from the Councilwoman Hertzack's office to get them to apologize, I don't have them at this moment, but you'll receive two tickets to an upcoming performance on behalf of the Strass, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Council, Mike McArthur, Steps Towing. First, I'll start with Mr. Brian Ford, apologize that he had to leave, training camp was calling, but you have received today's game ball, so congratulations, Tampa Bay Buccaneers. And also, on behalf of Todd Step, we find it very fitting to get a Go Local Tampa gift card for you, enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do for the city of Tampa.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, April, and congratulations on your achievement, thank you for keeping the water going and keeping Tampa running. I'm Lori Osborne, and I am with the Florida Orchestra, and on behalf of the Florida Orchestra, we'd like to invite you and your family to an upcoming performance in our new season. They're here, and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll give it to you.
Good morning, again. Good morning, Ms. April. I'm Grace Gonzalez, I'm here on behalf of the Gonsmart family and the 1905 family of restaurants. We want to thank you for being here in Tampa and committing yourself to helping us here thrive as a city, so we'd like you to enjoy yourself at any of our restaurants across the state of Florida, please have a night off and enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and congratulations for this.
Thank you, thank you.
You got an assistant helping you load your gifts up?
Yes.
Lynn, you got to come up here, you're not quite in the picture yet.
Sorry.
There you go.
So who's the politician?
Lynn.
I don't know.
Steve Michelini, I'm here on behalf of a couple of different folks, and we'd like to offer you a gift certificate to Jackson's Bistro on Harbor Island, gift certificate to Chicho's Restaurant Group on South Howard, the Yummy House China Bistro, and the Meat Market in Old Hyde Park. Now, some of these certificates I'll have to get to you, I've been a little preoccupied in the last few days, but anyway, there's a gift certificates for you, and congratulations, and there's different levels of safety, and I would think that water is right up there. You know, I had a call yesterday about some water issues, and they got right on it with Rory Jones and trying to resolve that, so we appreciate you keeping us healthy, thank you.
And from a grateful city council, we are presenting you with this commendation, so we really appreciate you, what you've done, what you continue to do.
So, I'd just like to give an honor to God, first of all, and my team that helped mold me, it's like a puzzle, everybody plays a part, and if it wasn't for my team, I wouldn't be who I am, because they always helping me and always there for me. My supervisors and my directors, if I need something, I can always go to them and talk to them, and there's no issue, so having a great team helped mold me to be a better person and a better person for the department, and I just enjoy working for the city and keeping it going well. And I just enjoy working for the city and keeping it going well. And I thank you for the opportunity.[601.62][601.62][applause]
Councilwoman Metta Scott.
Well, here.
Thank you, April, for...you know, we, as citizens and as elected officials, we turn on the water. It's for granted it's there, day in and day out, 365 days a year, for many years. The water quality is there, the clearness is there, and the price is right. That's all TV shows. So what you do on a daily basis makes the city of Tampa not run, but stay in place and produce the quality, the quantity, within the 85 million gallons that they average our contractors for. So we want to thank you and all your staff members that worked with you, the director of water, the super department heads, everybody, including Mr. Franco, all of you. And the ATU should be very proud of you like they are. Congratulations on being the Employee of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you.[658.82][658.82][applause]
Yep. Congratulations, you have a really wonderful department. I get a lot of great feedback, positive feedback from the community. You have a great department head and a wonderful team, everybody that's here. And you're a very special and integral part of that, and we want you to know...I mean, this is just a small token of our appreciation, but what you do does not go unnoticed. Again, I get a lot of positive feedback at my office for the level of service and quality. So keep up the great work. You make us proud every day, and this is well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, first, I want to apologize to the officer before. We have a rule that we're not supposed to say anything in these sessions, and so we try not to, but since everybody else is weighing in, I'll weigh in on this one, and I want to thank the officer before, too. Thank you for what you do in your department. As my colleague, Councilmember Mascalco, said, I get a lot of compliments on the customer service in the Water Department, and you guys are very proactive. You work with people. It's just outstanding service. And I don't know where it comes from. Does it come from Rory? Does it come from the other managers? But I've also never had any complaints about this department. And so whatever you all doing, please keep it up. Please keep up the great service, because the constituent appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Tampa City Council, you represent the department and ATU very well. Thank you. Have a beautiful day.
Thank you.[750.88][750.88][applause]
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Where are all my friends from the church that was in the bus that was getting out of the parking lot? Hi. I know there's more than two. There you go. Good morning again. Chief Bennett.
Good day. Thanks for everything. Always.
Morning, Council. John Bennett, Chief of Staff, and good morning to our public. I just wanted to seize the moment and thank you for, Council, for moving up this short administrative update. It was relevant because I had two union presidents here, both Steve Simon and Brandon Barclay from the ATU and the PBA. But just a little forecasting for Council. Since the beginning of April this year, all the way to just yesterday, we had been negotiating, and then yesterday was the final ratification for three of our four bargaining agreements. Yesterday, the PBA ratified both the lieutenants and the officer-through-sergeant agreement, and the ATU had ratified theirs just recently before that. So I just wanted to thank both unions for their professionalism during the negotiations and announce to Council that of the three of the four bargaining agreements that have now been ratified, we will be reaching out to your offices if you want to have any conversation with the staff. And of course, you're obviously always welcome to talk to the unions. We negotiated in front of hundreds of employees in the sunshine, again, since April, and we're looking forward to closing out the remaining one. As Council and the public could probably know, 3,800 of our 5,000 employees are in our bargaining units between the ATU, the PBA, and the IAF. So again, we welcome conversation with Council and, of course, Council with the unions between now when the contracts come through on base. So I just wanted to share that with Council and appreciate all the hard work of staff, especially legal, HR, and the department heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. I believe we have one online person. Is it Michael Randolph? And is he online or ready? Mr. Randolph.
Yes, good morning. My name is Michael Randolph. Good morning, our City Council. Today I bring you two urgent issues impacting African Americans, those that have passed and those who are still fighting to strive. First, the past. We ask your support for Design Geological Research Center. It's memorial, build, design, and related community program. This initiative is more than cultural, it is transformation. Design Communities, the Design Center will serve as a historic and cultural anchor, offering geological services, educational programs, and more. It is also an earned income model, generating revenue through open space, through a rental space program. It brings a meaningful social and economic return for the city. The memorial park is more than a public space. It's a reflection, education, and reconciliation. Now, the present. Since 1990, the West Tampa population has decreased by 50%. This is not a statistic, this is a warning. Displacement, cultural, racial, and equitable development are reshaping the neighborhood. This is why we are launching the Black Agenda, a conversation with West Tampa preacher tied to the upcoming District 5 special election. This is a virtual hall meeting, bringing together residents, nonprofits, the faith community, and the candidates to discuss real solution on August 27 at 4:00 p.m., again, online. This will be spread live, featuring state-level voices from the bottom up to talk about strategies to protect our communities. It is our moment to listen, lead, and act. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Fred Hearns, followed by Ron Weaver.
Good morning, Council. My name is Fred Hearns. I'm president of the Zion Cemetery Preservation and Maintenance Society, and I've appeared before you in the past just to reiterate the request for $8 million. That's what it will take to bring together the property that is needed to create this memorial site, the Zion Cemetery. Several of our board members are here today, along with some others, I believe, who will be speaking, people who have ties to that neighborhood, the old Robles Park, public housing development in Tampa Heights. This project has been on our radar for the last six years. We would like to thank we've made some progress, but today, as of today, we're still waiting for things to come together so that we can accumulate the property under our nonprofit and then begin to move forward with what Michael Randolph just talked about, the memorial site for, we believe, some 850 graves, pretty much all of them African-Americans who died at a time when, of course, things were segregated. But Richard Dobie, you may have heard that name before, Dobieville, purchased that land for a cemetery for black people. So today, we're asking that the right thing be done. I also serve, at your pleasure, on the Racial Reconciliation Committee. Our chairperson, Connie Burton, is here, other members of that committee are here. I was charged with looking at forgotten and ignored history. That was my assignment on the Racial Reconciliation Committee. This is example number one, the Zion Cemetery. It's time for us to do the right thing. I know that you're going to take steps in that direction. We've been told here and there that the city administration is making progress. It's sort of a complicated matter, but we've been able to figure out things before. This is in the heart of the city of Tampa. It's also in District 5, and it's one of the first projects I spoke with Councilwoman Gwen Henderson about, and she was very supportive. We now have a historic marker on Florida Avenue that the thousands of cars that drive north on Florida see every day, along with a banner that lists the names of some of those 850 people buried at Zion. Again, this is an $8 million ask. It's not a big number for this city, but it's needed for us to do the right thing at the Zion Cemetery site. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for the Perry Harvey Park Bandshell. We're making progress on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hearns. Ron Weaver, followed by Connie Burton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Council. I'm Ron Weaver, 4403 West Dale Avenue, and I rise on the occasion of Item 54, which is to name a street preferably in the neighborhood of Tampa Stadium for George and Leonard Levy, the Levy Brothers. I spoke to Leonard Levy a week or two ago. George Levy, his identical brother, born to Solomon and Shinny Levy in 1933, looking at those two perfect twins and wondering, what will they do for this city? What kind of men will they become? Well, George Levy was a U.S. sports writer after a great career at Plant High School, and he will be on April 3, 1974, in the Drake Hotel in New York City, trying to get Tampa a team. They only had three strikes against them. Number one, they had insufficient seats in the Big Sombrero. Number two, we had insufficient hotel rooms. And number three, we had no owner yet. Other than that, we have a perfect case on April the 3, 1974, in the Drake Hotel. And George Levy and his brother Leonard and the team of Trex Smith and the leaders of Tampa were able to convince the Super Bowl, to convince the NFL to allow an expansion franchise to Tampa instead of Seattle, Honolulu, and half a dozen other cities who lost to the team that was able to climb that hill and get us the Tampa Bay Bucks. Saving of the Tampa Bay Bucks also involved keeping the Bucks here, which involved a stadium, which involved a trip by George Levy into Mayor Dick Greco's office with a half a penny. He has a trophy company, a very successful, nationally-recognized, 30,000-square-foot trophy company, and George, with his machinery, cuts a penny in half, and in 1995, takes it into the office of Dick Greco in this building then, and he hands him a half penny. He says, "We need a half-cent sales tax, and we need it to include things like the Bucks, keeping the Bucks, but more importantly, 89% of it won't go through a Bucks stadium. It'll go for schools, which saved them. It will go for roads, which saved them. It'll go for drainage, which saved them. It went for the Water Department, for April and her team this morning recognized." This man, George Levy, and his brother Leonard Levy, deserve something named in their honor near Tampa Stadium because they were able to instill in this community the confidence of getting us the Bucks, and then together, they got us not one, but two different Super Bowls. And finally, I'll close with this. David Kennedy, one of the most distinguished philanthropists in this town, said that as swim coach, George Levy said, "I'm not going to just teach you how to swim, I'm going to make men of you." And George Levy made men and women of character and values out of hundreds of Tampa's leaders. George and Leonard Levy, I stand in their honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. No clapping, guys. Hey. No clapping, no finger snapping, none of that stuff in the audience. Thank you. Connie Burton, followed by Ashley Dejean.
Good morning, Connie Burton. August is recognized within the Black community as a time to reflect on those that have fought for freedom and justice, liberation officers and warriors in our community, and it also reflect based on the ongoing struggle of incarceration. And so when I hear people talk about the hundreds of thousands of people in a time that just a handful have accumulated based on criminal history, I wonder and say, what did our political leadership do to help turn the circle around? And so I want to recognize this morning a young man that put out a book called The Dark Web back in California, Gary, I can't think his name right now. But he talked about how cocaine and crack cocaine entered into the Black community. It didn't walk its way here. It was brought to our community. And even after the number of so-called 100-plus arrests, we still dealing with the issue of cocaine and dope in our community. You know why? Because we don't have political leadership to see how to turn the wheel for economic development in our community. How do we give voices to the energy of African people that constantly come here and say, these are the things that we need to rectify the harm done by political leaders? So yes, we do need to have a reckoning for Zion. Yes, we do. Yes, you can find $8 million. Yes, you do have it. But I also want to speak this morning about how we was able to, despite this crawl in some ways, the not wanting to do a successful summer program, we was able to do that. The city staff, Ms. Regina Castillo and her staff, was able to help a few young people, not the 72 that requested, not hopefully the 142 that we get next year, 144 or more. But we do have voices in this chamber this morning that want to talk about how that program was able to bring some light into their lives, how that program will, and those young people will be able to serve as examples in our community, that if they're just given a mere opportunity, if young people are given a mere opportunity to transform their lives, you know what we don't have anymore? Missing in action based on the long history of incarceration. And the chair, Ms. Miranda, got it right this morning. If we didn't have dope users, we wouldn't have dope sellers. We want to kill it all. We don't want no more dope sellers, and we don't want no more dope users.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Ashley, followed by Byron Velasquez. Ashley Dejean. Going once. Ashley.
Good morning. Hi, good morning. Where do I stand?
Right in front of the podium, right here.
Right here?
Start with your name, please.
Hi, my name is Ashley Dejean.
Good morning.
Do I just speak?
Yep, start talking. We've got three minutes.
Okay, so I just wanted to give thank you to Ms. Regina Castillo and Mr. Huntley. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be in this program. So this internship is very important and very valuable for our students, because this gives us hands-on experience and it opens a lot of doors. It tours us to the careers that we want to be and go into. They, not only has they helped us with a job, but they helped us fill out our resume, they helped us fill out...they helped us with our body language, how we should speak to people, how to apply for a credit card, how to, you know, how to fill out a W-4 form, how to present yourself, how to have home skills that maybe you weren't taught, and it just...you get to meet a lot of new people. I met a lot of people that I never...I met the mayor. I didn't know I had a mayor until, you know, I got into this. So it is very great that we get to have an experience with people that are upper than me, so I can...I get to decide if I really want to do this now that I'm getting to do this hands-on. So this is a very great experience. And not only that, I just graduated, so they're going out their way to go and see if they can hire me full-on with the city and other opportunities that I get to...they're just doing a lot for me right now, and I thank you all for having this program. This has helped a lot of kids, a lot of young kids, gets to open their eyes and gets...like they get to mature a little faster and get to learn what to do with their money, and so I thank everyone for having me.
Well, thank you. I'm going to break council rules, because we're not supposed to respond, but for you have SYIP. Can you tell us what that program stands for?
The Summer Youth Intern Program.
I know, but no...other people might not know what that means.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Very good. This is...you were in...how many months were you in it?
Two months.
Two months. Very good. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming up to City Council today.[1719.33][1719.33][applause] We'll allow the clapping to that one. Is it Byron Velasquez?
He doesn't want to speak.
He doesn't want to speak. Okay, very good.
Congratulations to you.
Yeah, very good. Congratulations.[1734.66][1734.66][applause] We look forward to great thanks from you guys. Marty Green. I don't see Marty. Marty Green? Oh, there he is, hiding in the back. The next one's going to be Geraldine Williams, after Marty.
Is Marty in? Okay, he's got the Marty.
Geraldine Green. Oh.
Mr. Green? Yeah, very good. Congratulations. We look forward to great thanks from you guys. Marty Green. I don't see Marty. Marty Green? Oh, there he is, hiding in the back. The next one's going to be Geraldine Williams, after Marty.
Good morning. My name is Marty Green. I'm with City Mobility Department at City of Tampa. This is my supervisor, Michael Brown. This is City of Tampa number though. I'm going to go to this. I was right here, if you look at this, I was forcefully, I'm going to say it again, forcefully, I had to pay Michael Brown to work overtime. As again, I looked, he said he was in the meeting, he took the money, then he, I go back to, I go back up. He said, "Son, you stick with me, I never lead you astray." He wanted me to set up Manny Montos, Derek Levitt, and James Garcia, but I refused to set those guys up. So I go back down to this part when I said, I asked, I say, "Pops, I don't want to go down there." I wanted to stay down there because I was forcefully had to set the employees up and I refused to set the employees up. I took it to Mayor Jane Castor, and I wrote her email, which she never did anything about it. She just turned it over. So I wrote her the letter, and I told, and I explained to her. I told her that Mike Brown asked me on several different occasions for money, and everything is going on unethical practices. Also, I refused to buy him lunch again, and, and I refused to let him borrow ten thousand dollars. But as of right now, like I've been told him two years ago, I mean, a year ago, that his wife asked me, he asked me for money to buy a land rule for his wife, and what do his wife have now? A land rule. I guess one of the city employees gave him the money for it. So I also contacted the Chief of Staff, right, sitting to my left. He told me, he told y'all that he had an open-door policy, which that's, that's a lie. He told me that I have to go through the same people that I was talking about. And I called him, and I texted him, and the texts, he didn't respond. So I went to, I went to Brian Rogers. I don't know, Brian Rogers is a martyr in KKK. That's, that's how I see it through my lenses. Therefore, every day, you could catch him at Dewey's because they got these stupid prices, cut late records, that's where you could catch him at. He's an alcoholic. So he don't know what's going on. Therefore, I contacted Gene Duncan. No response from Gene Duncan, not at all. So saying that to say this is, if this going to keep going on, why is we here speaking? For the simple fact is, I'm forcefully having to give money to a supervisor. This is very unethical. So therefore, if nobody don't take care of it, it's going to go down there, and I'm going to speak on the union contract. No, none of us signed that contract, not even the executive board signed that contract. Steven, Steve Simon dotted that contract up. We didn't, we did not want that. Why would we take a pay cut for him to get twenty-four percent? No, we didn't do that. So therefore, he took it upon himself, and he did, he gave us a contract that was boo-boo. How do, how does the TPD get six percent, and we don't, I mean, six percent all the way across, and we only get twelve? That's not right. We didn't sign up for that.
Thank you. Geraldine Williams, followed by Reva Iman.
Start with your name, please.
I'm Geraldine Williams, and I am here as the daughter of Mr. Judge and Ms. Mildred of Ebor City. I'm also the mother of Walter Lee Smith II and grandmother of Walter Lee Smith III, and I am here to say that I am a direct descendant of one of the bodies that has been interred at Zion Cemetery. So I come to you with a very emotional, a very substantial presentation, and I'm just saying to you that I don't like the fact that you aren't doing anything. And because I don't like it, I wanted to come to you to say, let me help you out. I did some research because I'm thinking that perhaps you just don't know, and you don't appreciate what we are going through. Those are people whom we have had in our families, and ours is Anna Rebecca Wyche, W-Y-C-H-E. She's listed, and I found her, they didn't find me, I found her because of family research. And I want to say to you that it was a Black man, and you've heard of him, Richard Dobie in eighteen ninety-four, who purchased that land, and Dobie gave that land to the city for Blacks who lived in Dobieville to be buried. And the city, and this is why I want you to understand, we're not just coming to you because we're just coming to you, but the city was involved in the actions that were illegal.
Yeah.
They taxed the cemetery after they weren't paid. Then an individual who was really high in the Confederate Army and high in the city and county here, he was the tax collector, and he was the one who was assigning the taxes. And then he said he paid the taxes, so it was his land. Well, he wasn't able to keep it, keep it at that time, but later on, he was able to keep it. And then he sold it to the white man from whom, to whom, from whom Dobie had purchased it. So what I'm saying is, while you individually and collectively at this time did not engage in the activities, they did exist, and we're asking you to do something about it. And Fred has said at least two times, and others have said, what we'd like for you to do, but I want to put one, one little deviation in that, and that is, we want you to...
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Your time's up. I'm so sorry. But you can email us anytime, all of us. You can email the council.
Okay, thank you.
Reva Iman.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Reva Iman, and I'm here speaking not for myself. I'm here speaking for those who lie there and my ancestors. And when I say my ancestors, when they built these businesses and these housing on top of them, they disturb the resting. They disturb the resting. So I'm speaking for my ancestors because now we have the opportunity to give them peace. We have the opportunity to give them grace. We have the opportunity to raise our hands and say, thank you, this day and time, that they can rest in peace if we can do the right things to bring that peace to my ancestors. Once again, I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for those who lie there. And when we ask for eight million dollars, just to thank, I was there because I was staying there, and when they was examining and going across there, I was able to walk with those individuals and see the light up of those bodies. I was there when they went down to certain things to verify that these people were there. It was disturbing. But we have the opportunity today to bring peace. We ask that you do the right thing. I said last week, it wasn't your fault. You can make history. You can be a part of history. Just to thank, this city is growing, it's getting bigger, things are changing. I think they say there was going to put trolleys going down Florida Avenue. What a wonderful thing for you can write down Florida Avenue, the visitors come and say Zion, first African-American cemetery that people can see passing. There's some plus to this, but there's some hurt to it as well, and it hurts me more because I was a resident staying there, seeing what was going on, hearing what was going on, and just to see it. And I really wish you had the opportunity to come and observe what was going on at that time, and I think it will put some clarity in your heart to really do the right thing. So we're asking, as a whole, that you please, not for me, but for my ancestors, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leroy Lentz, followed by Bishop Tom Scott.
Leroy, yeah, I'm sorry. Looks like... Let me say this, and please do not use the tone of my voice as aggressive.
Start with, start with your name, please.
Leroy Lentz, Solid Waste Department, thirty-two-year veteran. Please, I'm going to put this on record, please do not judge me by the voice, the tone of my voice, because it is what it is.
Just claiming.
Yeah, I'm claiming it. I'm down here for, I'm not down here to cause a problem, I'm down here to try to start, start, solution to our pickup garbage, and it's wrong. They've been doing this completely wrong for ten, ten or more years. It's not a Black thing, it's not a White thing, it's not racist, it ain't no racist thing, it's all about doing the right thing for every citizen in the City of Tampa limits about this garbage pickup. On holidays, when the holiday fall on a Monday, I ain't going to put it out like this, but East Tampa is more, it's more holidays on Monday rather than Tuesday, which down south get picked up. It's ridiculous. On a holiday week, we already short two hours when we come in to work that week, because we on ten-hour shifts. They, I told them, y'all, back in the days, they used to change, change our shift to four eights, because the city only paying us for eight hours for the holiday. So ten, ten, and ten and eight, it's only thirty-eight hours. They were using people annual time to make up the two hours. That's not right, that's illegal. So then they cut, they get clever and try to make up a twelve-hour day. How you going to make a twelve-hour day out of a ten-hour day? In this, this contract book, B two, B twenty-eight-one-a policy, purpose, the city recognized that the interest of the community and the job security of its employers depends upon a city's success in providing proper and effective service to the community. We's not doing that. We's not, we not doing that. I don't care if a holiday, if a holiday, if a, if somebody's house catch on fire on a Monday, what we going to tell the customer? Oh, we going to come back on your next scheduled date? No, they going to come and put the fire out. So while the customers paying, they, y'all just went up on the rates, on June six, y'all adopt a five-year rate increase for the residents of Tampa. Y'all increased their rates, but you ain't giving them the service they paying for, and that's not right. Back in the days, how we used to do it when I first started, and this was before I started in nineteen ninety-three, if a holiday fall on a Monday, we come on a Tuesday, pick up Monday route, Wednesday on our off day, we pick up Tuesdays route, and Thursday and Friday, we back on track.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bishop Tom Scott, followed by Sagret Dawson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of this body today. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to be able to address you.
Yeah. Can you take the conversation outside, please, if you're going to speak? Anybody in the chamber?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you reset the time?
Let me just say, for the record, it was my understanding that this was going to be in order in terms of speakers. Evidently got out of lines on where that Mrs. Williams was going to speak, then Mrs. Wilson, then Mr. Hearn, then myself, so that there'll be some continuity and consistency as opposed to being broke up where it is, but somehow I know that didn't happen. But I noticed you, as you listened to all of the person who spoke on Zion Cemetery, did I state my name? Thomas Scott, in case I didn't. Thomas Scott, pastor, Thirty-Fourth Street Church of God. And so I noticed your expression, and I think your expression said, this is a horrific issue. This issue is terrible. This issue should not have never happened. While you did not allow it to happen, there were those who did allow it to happen some years ago, and I would say all of us would be, should be appalled at the, what has happened and taken place to Zion Cemetery. I had the privilege of going there with Mrs. Williams and being there with the memorial service and visiting the various grave site that they identified. And in my own mind, I couldn't hardly imagine, how could anybody of consciousness could allow this kind of thing to happen to disturb the grave site of human being, people who have died? And so we have, you have an opportunity to be involved. I know as your role, the mayor, the mayor and her administration are in that part of negotiation. Perhaps you can request a briefing to see where this is and how it's being dealt with and how it's being handled, because in talking with Mrs. Williams, they are very much concerned there seem to be a delay or there seem to not be any movement. And so I stand today with Mrs. Williams and the board in Zion Cemetery to support them in this effort to try to get resolution to it. It is also my understanding that Mr. Richard Ganzmar and Mr. Creed have also agreed to work with the city in the transition or been in the transfer of the property so they can correct this issue and make this community, the African-American community a whole. And so I would urge you to see where we are in this process and try to help it to move forward so that we can bring peace to those who have died and they have been disturbed by the building and construction of houses and other things on this cemetery. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all that you do, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Sagret Dawson.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I was going to speak to the Chief of Staff after, you know, lunch, whatever, and then ask if I could, then I'll make, maybe if it's possible, a motion at the end of this meeting, that we get a written update on Zion at a future meeting. I just want to put that out there.
That would be in order. Thank you, sir. Okay, Sagret, go ahead.
Yeah, again, I'm Sagret Dawson, and really, I don't care how anybody takes it. Regardless of the status, white folks in Tampa have no problem reminding Black people that y'all ain't going to see us as anything other than niggers. And in Tampa, when I talk about these, some of y'all white folks, I'm saying, like those high bench-sitting crackers that are across the street over in the thirteen-judge circle, they can't stand Black men like me. Part of the problem is, you know, they love compliant Negroes. They don't like, especially the ones who love to mimic their talking points and smile nice and shuffle and bootlick and even let Master Buck break them for a pat on the head, you know, some crumbs off his table, or even a couple of trinkets of silver or gold. Naturally, you all know I don't fit that mold. All you got to do is Google me. And I know that a lot of crackers across the street hate it, and I got a problem with some of you all just letting this stuff go by.
Mr. Sagret, I'm sorry, I know I, a couple of them went by, but the racial epithets, I would appreciate if you paraphrased those for us to keep the chamber in order.
Okay, can I say stinking skin white people?
We have, we have, we have kids in the chamber.
Okay, all right. So you want, you want me to calibrate my speech? That's real interesting considering I was willing to die.
Can you add one minute for the time that I, give them an extra minute for the time of the hour?
All right, we're going, we're going to do it. We'll do it your way, so. Which is interesting, again, part of the problem is in the fact that I live in a county, by the way, and I don't know if you all drive or move around, there's a ninety-foot Confederate flag out there. We talking about me calling people, using certain racial epithets, which is funny. Our music now is litter with it, right, people? When you say nigger, that's okay, but I can't say...
No, 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 no.
Well, that, that, well, listen, let's just call it what it is. I live in a county with a ninety-foot Confederate flag at I-4, and they actually change it from time to time. And I have, I may disagree with the flag, but I do remember I took that oath to support and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, remember? You can go look at my two fourteen also. So keep that in mind. And what I asked your attorney to do the other week was to look into my allegations about these people. But again, I don't sauce step, I speak the law, and they hate it. I'm unwavering, I'm going to stay, I'm going to stay that way. And as a veteran, I know that I've earned mine. Now, Rev knows like Moses in that book that y'all thump a lot, God hardened Pharaoh's heart, right? Despite what the truth was, he hardened their heart, and I'm not liking myself to Moses or any other great people that may have been depicted in that book, but I've walked the, I've walked these steps on my own. And I'm clear with what I say, and I'm actually the same guy that's taken on the Department of Revenue for their violations in the child support area. I whipped your, your judge and your cop who falsely accused me of perjury. And I've taken on, you know, recently, law firms like Austin, Baskel Row, Oscar Row Baskel, Banker, Gasler, Lopez, Butler, Waimiler, Katz and Craig, and they are so unethical, they're like petty foggers. You know what that is, right, attorney? They're like petty foggers. They use these dubious tactics to try to get by, but they get help from... You know what that is, right, attorney? They're like petty foggers, they use these dubious tactics to try to get by, but they get help from white judges like Judge Emily Ann Peacock and Paul Huey. And of course, we know what Greg Holder tried to do to me, but was unsuccessful. I only wonder how many black folks who didn't have my wherewithal that they sent up the road falsely. That being said, I, I had to go off a little bit because of, uh, the councilman's, uh, suggestion to me, although I, I do find it disrespectful considering. Until you all talk about that flag, don't talk about words. And listen, we don't have to agree with what people say from time to time, and I'm not saying that I agree with everything that I've seen people wear on their shirts or on their clothing, but I respect their right to use the First Amendment. We like to pick and choose when the Constitution applies, especially when black folks are the ones who wanna use it. That being said, shout out to the greatest institution of higher learning in this city, the University of Thomas Jefferson High School. Y'all take care.
Thank you. Robin Lockett, followed by Islay Irvin. Robin?
Good morning, Council. Uh, Robin Lockett, I have several things I wanna discuss today. Uh, first of all, I am a board member of Zi- uh, Zion Cemetery, and, uh, I was a resident of, uh, Robus Park. Actually, the cemetery was right under the, uh, apartment that, uh, we, uh, lived in, two-twelve East Kentucky. So, uh, it is disturbing, uh, that, uh, those, that, that residency was built on top of the cemetery, and it's been years since something has been, uh, promises have been made and they haven't been kept. So we, uh, look forward to, uh, you finding it in the budget. The, uh, number is, the asking amount is eight million dollars, uh, to, uh, make Zion Cemetery whole, right? Cause we're all about, uh, reparations and, and making everybody whole. So I look forward to that conversation when it starts to happen. I had an opportunity to, uh, attend the meetings for Love, Grow, Thrive, twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty forty-five. Uh, the planning, uh, uh, department came out, they, uh, came out for a special meeting for Sulfur Springs, and then their regular meeting, scheduled meeting for, uh, East Tampa. I applaud those, uh, women for, the department for what they did, right? They gave out, they gave, uh, great information. If I had any, uh, concerns, it would be that when they come out to the community, cause they kept identifying that they're going thirty, thirty-five thousand feet high, right, in regards to how they're looking at that plan. That they address and, uh, in regards to speaking, explain what they're talking about. Because a lot of people don't know what density is, a lot of people don't know what a transitional, I mean, transportation, transportation corridor is. So just explain as they go to help the community and, and give, uh, give examples to help the community be able to understand it. So that would be my, my only concern about them putting that meeting on. Um, I applaud, uh, I really applaud the employees for coming out and speaking their truth in regards to what's going on, on, uh, in their department that they work in. Uh, being brave enough to do that, because if you keep it just within, within that department, nobody can hear it. With them coming to council, everybody can hear it, and it's up to somebody to move some, because people can't keep complaining about the same thing and, and not get rectified. So I will hope that whoever's listening, uh, to these individuals, that the employees that's coming out and brave enough to speak their truth, that they do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. The next speaker is gonna be DC Gutoufis, followed by Curtis Wilson, I believe, Councilman Carlson, you have a motion?
Yeah, I, I would like to, DC, um, has an interpreter, and so he said usually we accommodate him with an extra two minutes for his interpreter to, to translate. And so, um, I would make a motion to add two more minutes to his.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Good morning, welcome DC.
I wanna thank you all for that. My name is Jessica, I'll be interpreting for DC today. Okay. Um, good morning, council members and everyone here today. My name is DC Gutoufis. I'm here in connection with the item fifty-four, which I formally submitted on March twenty-fifth with the support of the councilman, um, Manscolato, well, sorry, I pronounced it wrong.
He's not here to enjoy that.
Requesting an honorary street renaming for J. Leonard Levy and George Levy, preferably, um, near the Raymond James Stadium. I'm grateful to the council member Miranda Carlson for initiating the motion on June fifth, twenty twenty-five, and to the city and staff for preparing today's presentation. I submitted the formal request for this renaming earlier this year after working closely with Councilman Guido on it for over a year. The motion is now scheduled to come before the council, and the proposed location is near the Raymond James Stadium, um, where the Levy brothers' legacy is deeply felt. This marks the third initiative that I have had the privilege to lead with our city. Beginning with the government access television captioning during the nineteen nineties, followed by the honorary street renaming for the James Urbansky near downtown Tampa, um, a couple of years ago. George Levy, uh, the brothers were more successful businessmen. They were the, um, I don't know why I'm so nervous reading this. Um, they were the civic visionaries and proud sons of Tampa who dedicated their lives to elevating the city's national profile. Beginning, beginning in the nineteen seventies, the Levy brothers played the crucial role in bringing the NFL to Tampa. Um, they joined a small but determined group that worked tirelessly with the commissioner, Pete Rozell, and the team owners to advocate for a franchise. Their efforts were instrumental and in the Tampa being awarded the Buccaneers in nineteen seventy-four, which was a milestone in changing the trajectory of our city forever. Their leadership did not stop there. The Levy brothers helped push through the construction of the original Tampa Stadium and later navigated the politics that led to the Raymond James Stadium. They were the key players in securing the five Super Bowls for Tampa, along with the NCAA Men's Final Four and the college football playoff and the national championships. They championed the USF and the University of Tampa Athletics, and they supported the Tampa Bay Lightning, and they had helped create the kind of sports and the infrastructure. In twenty twenty-one, the Super Bowl generated more than five hundred and seventy million for the region and each year. The Buccaneers alone contributed more than a hundred million in the local economic activity. These are not just numbers, but they reflect a leg- legacy that continues to benefit, um, every corner of our community. As a fourth-generation Timpanian, I carry a deep sense of pride and responsibility for the city's past, present, and future. My great-grandfather was the first Greek to settle in Tampa in eighteen eighty-seven, and in nineteen ninety, I became the first deaf graduate to graduate from the University of Tampa. I grew up hearing stories about the Levy brothers from my late father who knew them as childhood neighbors. Their story, uh, is Tampa's story, and it deserves to be remembered. An honorary street renaming is fitting and lasting tribute to two men whose vision helped build the Tampa, the Tampa Bay we know and love today. I respectfully ask for your support in moving forward, and thank you for your time and consideration.
And I don't think we got y'all, both of your names, can you state both of the names for us, please?
Who?
Both of your names, can you state it for the record, please?
Javala Gutoufis and Jessica Poveta. I wanna thank all of you for giving us time to speak.
Thank you very much, my friend.
You do a lot of good things for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Curtis Wilson, followed by Jarvis Alameen. Curtis Wilson?
Yeah, I can see. Just help me up. Okay, I'm on my feet now.
Good morning.
Thank you.
You get by with a little help from your friends.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I am Curtis Walker Wilson, and I am here, uh, as the voice for those from my era who are no longer here to speak for themselves, the ones who were there when the cemetery, Zion Cemetery was taken from them. I am ninety-six years old, and if I live to see next Wednesday, I'll be ninety-seven. So I am the voice. I am the voice for those people this morning. Uh, the ones who were there, they were seen but not heard. Their voices meant nothing when they tried to save the cemetery. So I am here to, uh, support this Zion Cemetery Committee in their efforts to bring this cemetery back to life. I know that's an oxymoron, but that's our talk. We wanna bring it back to life. Uh, we waited long enough. We don't want to wait until that great getting up morning to bring it back. So I have, right now, I have positive, I'm entertaining positive vibes about it because the committee has, they have been, uh, asking you for quite some time now to move forward on this. So that's why I'm standing here. I am the voice for a, a community, a vi- a vibrant community, rather, of families, uh, homeowners. They were homeowners, modest homes, but they were homeowners. Uh, Robus Pond, that's what it was called back then, was a vibrant community of homeowners. And many of them had, they had large families, and most of them went off and they did well for themselves. The Wilsons, the Dinnards, uh, the James family, the Sutton family, the Simmons family, the Williams family, there were two sets of Williams out there. Uh, Myers family, Logan, Patterson, Thompson, Flucker, Stone. Uh, there was a school, Robus Pond Elementary School, there were three churches, two Baptist churches and an African Methodist Episcopal Church. And I am accom- I am accompanied by my pastor from Saint Luke African Methodist Episcopal Church today. We stand here in support of this, this committee trying to get this cemetery restored. To me, it's sacred, it's sacred, and the time is far spent. So I'm asking for a vote of yea on this so we can move forward expeditiously, get this cemetery back where it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Hearn, I hope you have her testimony on video.
Mr. Chair, point of order, we, I know, um, council member Manscolgo is talking about getting the chief of staff to come up some other time, but he's here and the people are here, why, shouldn't we get him, give him a minute to respond or two minutes to respond? Are you prepared for that? Can you say anything in response to what they've been talking about with Zion? They're just asking for an update on Zion. Well, I was just thinking, since everybody's here, you could, you could address them now.
So I, I stepped in the back real quick to ask Lisa to call you, but you're here. Oh, you did, okay. No, I wanted to make a, just at the end of the meeting, if it would be proper to make a motion just for a written update for September eighteenth or October ninth, just to get an update of what's going on with the, the property owners and, and, uh, that. Cause I know there was a news story, I don't know, about a month ago, that progress was being made with private property owners and figuring that situation out. Would you, yeah.
But should we give him a minute if he has a response?
Okay, a motion from Councilman Carlson to give Chief Bennett a minute to speak. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Viera, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Chief Bennett?
Alright, again, good morning, John Bennett, chief of staff, and thank you for this, a great representation of something near and dear to my heart because I served that community for forty years on, and, uh, and I, you know, we built the rich house there, there are resources and community hope for the community to, uh, to flourish. And, and of course, we've watched this journey as administration. I know they're working on, uh, the memorial. Matter of fact, I remember nurturing that idea when everything came to light about having the memorial. I know there's, uh, there's a, there's a lot of complexity, of course, between land and the memorial and the design, and of course, the financing. But I can assure you that, uh, based on the motion that was just drafted to be formalized, uh, the city will give a full-throated update as soon as the motion lands, and we'll make sure everybody's fully aware. But I can tell you, there's nothing that I'm aware of with our staff that is doing anything but supporting this, uh, to land how it's supposed to be. So, again, thank you for being here today, and again, we'll get you more specifics as we journey on, and thank you for the opportunity, Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank you all for turning out today. It was very nice to see you all, and all my friends in the bus. Thank you. We'll give a minute for everybody to clear out. Jarvis, you're gonna be next to speak.
Yeah, no problem.
We'll, we'll, we'll let the, quiet down first.
So, Mr. Chairman, when my, my mom and my grandparents came from Cuba and came to Tampa, they lived at Robus Park at the beginning before they, they rented a house, but I got, I have a picture of my mother in the doorway of one of them, so, you know, it's, it's a lot of history.
And can I say, if I may, Walter, Walter, I love that shirt, I think that every day. Every day, every day.
Okay. Counsel come to order, uh, Mr. Jar- Jarvis Alameen.
Alright. Good morning, Council. Jarvis Alameen, Tampa, forty-eight eighteen East Ninety-Ninth Avenue. Also sit on the Re- Reconciliation Commission too, but I'm here because I was invited here by Mr. Jaredine Williams and her son Walter is a good friend of mine, is my homeboy from Georgia, Bishop Tom Scott. I wanna say this to y'all, for real. Just what I wanna say. When I think about Zion Cemetery, I think about Black Wall Street. I think about bombing nine hundred businesses, just destroying the land. I think about how people felt that was Jewish when they got reparations for what was done to them. I think about the Japanese, what happened to them in reparations. Now I think about us as African-American, black people that have been suffering slavery, suffering and death for four hundred and thirty-eight years. I, I remember growing up in Georgia when the cemeteries were segregated. I couldn't imagine the kind of hate that people could have in their heart to disturb the dead. In my faith tradition, it says that the dead can hear you talk, but they can't talk back to you. So I go to the graveyard and talk to Jimmy Bell, my mama, and talk to her, cause I know she hear me. I'm thinking if Jimmy Bell was in that grave on Zion, I can imagine this woman who raised me so well, how she would feel to start building on top of her grave. She would rally at the grave, cause she was not no person that just sit there. Jimmy Bell would talk back. She'd have been mad to start rallying the grave, you understand what I'm trying to say to you? This is just amazing. They didn't put the time on me, so they starting late, it's okay. See, I gotta work. I like to do it in Jimmy Bell name, it all happen good for me. So I got an extra minute to fit, it's on you too, Chairman. Uh, so what I wanna say to y'all.
I cannot confirm or deny the timer didn't start because I have three really good friends up there.
That's amazing.
I'll let you guys figure out which ones are not the friends.
Ah, no problem. But let me just say this, on, on a, on a real tip, on a real tip. Each one of y'all ran for office. Y'all gotta have a political will. The political will to take politics out of it. You know, I hate when politicians say they're all my public servants. No, you're a politician. Because if you're a public servant, these kind of issues that come before you, this would pull at your heartstrings. It would pull at your heartstrings. When you have to look at people, you know, we are created in nations and tribes that we may know each other, not despise each other. The most honored of us is the one who keep his duty to God. We keeping our duty to God. This lady here with Wilson Funeral Home, what's she in there? I remember when I came here thirty-eight years ago, went to Wilson Funeral Home to get them, the support events I was doing, always wrote me a check, and she was there. I never know what happened to her, but she was there, she ninety-seven years old now. So Councilman, I'm saying to you, please, find the political will, find it in your heart, Mr. Chairman, all of y'all city council, we know all of y'all. Let's make it happen, okay? Let's, let's, are you serious? Are you curious? If you're curious, all the curiosity out now. Be serious about this and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jarvis. Islay Irvin, followed by Steve Byrd. We have four more speakers, FYI. Mr. Irvin? Islay Irvin, going once, going twice. Okay, gone. Steve Byrd. Steve Byrd, followed by Ashley Morrow.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Steve Byrd, I live at, uh, eight-ten East Skagway, right in the thick of things. I'm here to talk about the pool today. Um, I know there's been a lot done and a lot of promises made and so forth, and I'm just getting up to speed too. getting up to speed to it, on it. It almost seems like you guys don't want input. I mean, it was hard to figure out when it was, uh, it, it moves along really fast and, uh, I'm afraid the people that have represented the neighborhood have accepted just too many promises and too many studies and it, any other area of the town, the city, it would be done now. And it really is, it's pathetic. I hear things like, well, people in this neighborhood don't swim. They don't swim because they don't have a pool. They'll drown when it rains. They need to swim. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashley Morrow, followed by Stephanie Pointer.
Hello, my name is Ashley Morrow. Um, I'm a fifth generation Tampan and I love black history. And since I see that people come up and say anything, I can come up here and talk about black history and put it on record. Um, so I say I'm a fifth generation Tampan. I'm the great, great granddaughter of Willie Mae Lunsford, who had Lucille Lunsford, who had Carl Morrow Sr., who had Carl Morrow Jr., who had myself. So my family has been here in Tampa for a very long time and I am invested in learning and sharing all of Tampa's black history. My father's uncle, my great uncle's name was Norris Morrow. He was a white hat during the 1967 Tampa riots. That riot happened after Martin Chambers was shot in the back by the Tampa Police Department. I'm not here to rail against the Tampa Police Department. This is just something that happened. And it's something I did not learn in school. And it's something that was very important that happened in Tampa's black history because during that, after that, there was a reckoning along Central Avenue in Belmont Heights. Also, my family came out of Belmont Heights, I forgot to add that, along Emma Street. And all of those things make me, and it's a part of me and my legacy. So, back to my uncle, he goes to DC and he speaks, uh, on a, during a hearing, this is on TV. I remember my father probably told me this about 10 years ago, I didn't really pay attention to it. And it didn't, it wasn't until I spoke to Mr. Hearns and he shared this history with me, and he said, no, this was actually important. And I feel like Tampa doesn't share, it doesn't elevate its black history. Because when people know who they are and whose they are, they start to put value on their lives. And for me, I felt like just a more important person just because of who this man was and I did not know. I knew everything else about the man, but I didn't know about, about this. Something I learned, uh, a few years ago through a book called Tampa History, I believe it's by Cantor Brown, it's about the Reconstruction Period. He talks about a Tampa militia that was led by a Thomas McKnight, who was one of the starters of the Harlem Academy. This is a list of black people that were on a black militia here in 1870, 70, sorry. So that's five years after slavery ends here. Six years, actually, 1864. So, uh, these people's names are just as important. And there are people and descendants that are here still in Tampa and their legacy is important. One name that you might recognize, and I was looking it up, Bryant Horton. There's a Dr. Sam Horton Building located on 40th and 21st, the big pink building. He is his descendant. And there are other names. There's Andrew Stilling, who has a, um, who has a subdivision here in Tampa. I will stop right there, I'll be here next week. That's my time.
Thank, thank you very much. Stephanie Pointer. Valerie, I don't have a speaker card for you. Did you, did you fill one out? Okay, we'll do it. Ms. Pointer, state your name.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. Um, you know, on Monday, we had a budget meeting and, and, um, in about five minutes, I calculated $8 million that we could be using for a cemetery. Oh, my gosh, oh my gosh. So, this is our list from 2023. Um, I would love to know how many of these fees have actually been raised since 2023? And I'm thinking the answer is zero. The only fee that I know of, that I've seen that's been changed since the list we received in 2023, um, at the Budget Committee, was for the sidewalk funds. And it's not even, I don't think it's even on that list. So that's my only knowledge. Now, I want to talk about the budget, cause you know I love the budget. Um, I was looking at growth and development last night and, and I, this was in a meeting, um, and I was noticing that we're bringing in less money over time. Now, when Ms. Feely came before the Budget Committee in, uh, March of 2024, she said that there was a, uh, fee study being done for land development. Where is it? My understanding is done. There's also a fee study being, there was also a fee study being done for construction services. I think it's interesting that we have these charges for services on both of these, and they don't really seem to match up. You would think they would kind of be in alignment with one another. But I, what I'm trying to figure out for land development is, we got charges for services, which is a pit in $600,000. But where, this intergovernmental money, is that the money where we're supplementing these fees? Because I remember, if I remember correctly, there was a big chunk of money that we weren't covering. So if a service costs, if a service is being charged $100, it actually costs the city $1,000 to do that service. So who's paying the difference? Everybody who pays taxes in the city of Tampa is paying the difference between the $100 and the $1,000. So $900 is coming out of our pockets. And I'll give you another department where I see this issue. Um, this is Neighborhood Enhancement, they came in January of 2023. I don't think these fees have been changed. Um, we were, we were losing money on our business tax, and if you look at the sheet I gave you, that business tax has not been increased since 1991. 1991! Oh my God, I was 20 years old. Anyway, um, the personnel cost, the, this list is huge. But the bottom line is, the first one, we're losing $541,000 that we lost last, that year. Another big chunk of money, um, we lost $75,000 on these fees. So we've got a bunch of money that the city could have to pay taxes when, and what made me dig into this is because you guys kept talking, there was this like scope creep about a millage increase. Let's charge what the services cost for the services and the citizens of Tampa should not be pa- offsetting those fees. I also want to ask you about the constru- the convention center.
Ms. Pointer.
We projected $700,000 and spent $11 million. How do you miss 10.3 million?
Ms. Pointer, your time has expired.
Have a good day.
Last but not least, Valerie Bullock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Valerie Bullock from Ponson Leon. And this has been a good meeting for me today because y'all seen the people who helped mold me and made me who I am. And Ms. Curtis Wilson, y'all might don't know her, but we know her because they had Wilson Funeral Home. And in the 60s, if your shoes was ragged, her brothers would call you over there and ask you who your parents was and they would buy you shoes. They did a lot for the community. So when we think about building some apartments, let's put her name on them.
And I wanted to talk about, um, housing, the Jackson House, to be, um, specific. I had came down here, I guess Tuesday, when it was all on the news, thought I was gonna get me a piece of wood, I'm scared to get close to it. But we, uh, we need to get with Mrs. Collins, we need an update. When are you gonna start? Everything you wanted here fell into place. Okay, now, put your money where your mouth is, let's get it going. And another thing I wanted to talk about was, um, housing. And how housing is tied in to Resolution 568 and 344. We used to have red line and we used to have the houses down there behind Blue River in the bottom, they were substandard housing. Then urban renewal came through, told you the house wasn't fit for living, so they built you a house and you got funding for some kind of way. What I'm seeing going on in East Tampa, I was at CRA, and I'm just gonna say it, I talked to CDC. I said, y'all putting in them 79, um, unit apartments there, why are they all two bedrooms? Why aren't there three bedrooms? There's no such thing as, I got the perfect family of boy and a girl, some of us had four and five children. And I think what is happening now, everybody's focusing on two bedrooms and one bath, what about the people that have three and four, five kids? Where are they supposed to go? Did anybody think about that? And we need some three bedrooms apartments. The only ones I know about, the old fund land, they put six in there, they had a ones, Mesa Yo, whoever, the Cuban guy, who I don't know, they, they got those right down, um, 22nd Street and Columbus Drive. We need more apartments, bigger than two bedroom. We need some three bedrooms apartment. And I really feel like me and, um, the public got bamboozled. Everybody's pushing affordable housing, affordable housing. Yes, affordable for 80, 100 and 120% of the AMI. What about the 350%? The people are being left behind. They can't afford it. And when we start building houses and apartments, we need to split them, half for 350%, half for 80 and 120%, cause it's not right to build 10 apartments, two of them is 30% income, the rest of them is for high income. So we are still being left behind. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock. Thank you. Hey, Ms. Mr. Hearns, I don't think you heard me when I was talking earlier. I hope you got Curtis, uh, Ms. Curtis's, uh, history on tape, cause that sounds like she's got a lot of information about her life in, in those neighborhoods. That'd be great. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. We have public safety, Councilman Vera.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Neighborhood Community Affairs Committee, Councilwoman Hurtak.
Mr. Chair.
Stand by, Councilman Carlson.
I, I would like to have a separate vote for number nine, please.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Separate, we're gonna poll nine for a separate vote.
So I, I, um, so before we, we, uh, do this, I actually wanted to speak, um, one of our public commenters talked about the Sulfur Springs restoration, and I wanted to give an update. This $1.8 million goes to renovate or to fix the seawall and to do some of the injections of, they call it, uh, mortar.
Mortar.
Yeah, mortar, to go under the pool to help stabilize it, to see where we are. So that's what this is going for, this will get started, and, uh, and we will see where we are after that. But it is absolutely moving along. Engineers take a while. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Also, if you don't know, there's a Sulfur Springs, um, Pool Committee, uh, to definitely search for them. Um, if I could get Ms. Scharf to come out and, uh, my aide will meet you and let you know who's in charge of that, so you can get in contact with them, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I move items number six through 14, but not nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it.
And now I move item number nine.
We have a motion from Councilman Hurtak for move item nine, a second from Councilman Vera, and all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Nate. Clerk, can you read that vote?
Item passes.
With Councilman.
With the Councilman.
Voting no. Okay, very good. Uh, we are moving on to infrastructure. Councilman Maniscalco, we're polled item 20, so I'll be.
I move items 15 through.
Oh, do we accept it as, we, we accept the sub- yeah. Just have to move it, yeah.
I make a motion to move items 15 through 21, minus 20, cause it was polled, and for 15, that is a substitute.
Thank you. We have a, a motion for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. We'll hear item 20 as a first staff report. Okay, Finance Committee.
Can I remove item 22 to 25?
22 to 25. We have a count, a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Development Economic Opportunity Committee, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I need to recuse myself for number 33 and I'll file a form later, uh, but my company works with a company that's related to this, and so I'm gonna recuse myself. But I'll move 26 through 32 and then 34.
Second.
Through 35.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, so for item 33, we are pulling that separately. That would be Councilwoman Hurtak.
I move item 33.
We have a motion from Councilman Hurtak moving item 33, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Mobility Asset Management Committee.
Can we just have them read it?
Okay, I'm sorry, clerk, would you read that vote?
Motion, carry unanimously with Carlson abstaining.
Thank you. And then you'll file the vote, uh, the form later. Uh, Mobility Asset Management Committee, Councilwoman Hurtak, 36 to 43.
Um, yes, I move items 36 through 43.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it.
Councilwoman.
Huh? Councilwoman, Councilwoman, woman. I think they. Okay. Uh, I'd like a motion to open public hearings.
Second.
Yep.
First, yeah. First. We have. Okay, I have a motion to open the 10 and 10:30 public hearings.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. I had a second on that as well, I think it was Councilman Hurtak. Okay. 10 o'clock public hearings. Here we are. Okay, item number 44.
Sanus Development Coordination presenting file number VAC 24-12 for second reading and adoption. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, is there an applicant here for item 44? Good morning, start with your name, please.
Good morning, my name is Teresa McNeil. I'm the applicant and owner of the property.
That's it? Okay, good. Okay, is there, anybody have any questions for the applicant? Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to item 44? We have a motion to close for Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the automated system is out, so we're gonna have to do a verbal roll call vote. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, we have to read first, I'm sorry. Councilman Miranda, why don't you do that?
On number 44, this is 1412, Mark Baker, for second reading about Martin, City of Tampa, Florida, vacation, building, and abandoned, of which are after the type of ways that lie within the track of the Green Avenue South Side subdivision recorded in Book 4169, page 1044 of the Official Records of Hillsborough County, Florida, OR, and a portion of Green Avenue right of way that lies in the plat of Bobstone Fending Company halfway edition as recorded in OR Book Plat Book Two, page 78, and a portion of the unnamed unplatted right of way that abuts Interstate Boulevard, Inter Bay Boulevard in Tampa, Florida, all of which are located north of Inter Bay Boulevard, south of Thornton Avenue, east of First Street, and west of Alkins Avenue, and more precisely described in Section Two thereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement, penalties, and viol- for violations, providing for definition, interpretation, and repealing conflicts, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Vera. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Which item?
44.
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Collin Nen?
Yes.
Motion, carry unanimously.
Thank you. Item 45.
Rosamus Development Coordination presenting file number VAC 25-07 for second reading and adoption. I am available if you have any questions.
Counsel, have questions? Your mic is on, do you have a question?
No, it's, it's on because I left it on, but if we take this vote, it's gonna be, it's, we need another council member. I'm looking at another two no's in this.
Can you get, uh, Councilman Carlson back? Why don't you, let's just pause for, let's take a strategic jeopardy pause. Okay. Advocate?[1704.65] Applicant?
I'm here to answer any questions. I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Does Counsel have any questions of the applicant? Hearing no questions. Is there anybody in the public that is here to speak to item forty-five? Hearing none, a motion, is there a motion to close? We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilman Maniscalco, would you like to read item forty-five?
Yes. File number VAC twenty-five dash zero seven, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida vacating, closing discontinuing, and abandoning the alleyway located north of Abdullah Street, south of Dewey Street, east of Matanzas Avenue, and west of McDill Avenue. Within the plat of John H. Drew's first extension in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida. As more fully described in section two here, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth herein, providing for enforcement and penalties for violations, providing for definitions, interpretations, and repealing conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vera. Roll call vote, please.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hurtak?
No.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Clendenin?
No.
Motion, carry, with Hurtak and Clendenin voting no.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, very good. Item forty-six. And just for the record, I was absent at this vote, but I reviewed the record and I'm ready to vote.
Good morning, Counsel. Mallory Legasi, Real Estate Department. Agenda item forty-six is a second reading for the honorary naming of the multi-sport field at Forest Hills Park in honor of Roland Paz Senior. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Does Counsel have any questions? No questions? Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to item forty-six? A motion to close from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilman Hurtak, would you like to read this one?
As a councilwoman, yes, I will. File number eight and twenty-five dash. I know, that's okay. One five seven, one eight. I just have to, right now, I'm the only one, and I have to state my claim.
I appreciate that.
Uh, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida approving the name of the multi-sports field at Forest Hills Park in Tampa, Florida to honor Roland Paz Senior, providing an effective date.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman woman Hurtak, a second from Councilman man, Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Councilwoman Hurtak, thank you very much for reading that motion. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson? Clendenin?
Yes.
Motion, carry, unanimous.
Move to continue item forty-seven to November sixth, twenty twenty-five, ten thirty a.m., three fifteen, East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two.
You are on top of it. Motion to continue from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Vera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item forty-eight.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Counsel, McLean Evans, Assistant City Attorney. Item number forty-eight on today's agenda is the public hearing for the adoption of the city's annual non-ad valorem stormwater service assessment role. The purpose of this assessment is to generate funds to be utilized by the city's stormwater utility and the provision of stormwater management services to developed properties located within incorporated boundaries of city of Tampa, otherwise known as the city's stormwater service area. As you may recall, this assessment was originally adopted in two thousand and three. The service assessment rate this year is eighty-two dollars per ESU equivalent stormwater unit and has remained the same since two thousand and fifteen. No written objections or general public comment have been received on this item. As with non-all ad, I mean, as with all non-ad valorem hearings, please recall that the vote needs to occur while the hearing is still open. Staff and I are here if you have any com, if you have any questions. And please also remember to take public comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurtak.
I just want to ask again, is there any change in the rate?
That, no, there's, there is no change in the rate. It has been the same since two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. I'd just like to put that on the record. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to item forty-eight? Please come forward, state your name.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. I just want to ensure that these funds are only spent on stormwater services. I was informed by somebody in the stormwater department that, she said that the fees really haven't changed since whatever year it was. But the bottom line is that they didn't take into account for salary increases. So maybe that needs to be something we look at in putting that into place. And I actually had a really nice lady who came to me yesterday. And she asked me, she had a row of townhomes. And some of them paid two assessments. There were seven townhomes, some of them paid two assessments. And the, and the other five only paid one. I'm curious as to why that would be. And we'll dig further. But I want to make sure that our stormwater people are working only on stormwater. That's the most important part. And that stormwater is only paying for stormwater people. Because last year, we found out that there were people who were in the mobility department who were being paid with stormwater. So, you know, I'm all for this. And if we had to raise it to help people's houses not get flooded, then maybe that's something we should look into. But we need to make sure that stormwater is being spent for stormwater and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pointer. State your name.
Steve Michelini. First, thanks to Hagar for doing the deep dive into the stormwater funding issues and allocations. It's apparent that maintenance is a serious and continuing issue. And we've, we've avoided it for a long time. And it's important going forward to have a work program that focuses on maintenance first before we start undertaking major construction projects. It's extremely important. And it appears through the research that a whole group of teams of neighbors and businesses have conducted that some of the stormwater facilities are not functioning, haven't functioned, and won't function without serious maintenance being conducted. So it's, it's something we'll be looking at going forward. And hopefully, the Counsel will continue to weigh in on this. And thank you, Councilwoman, for setting up a separate meeting on Monday. And I'm sure you'll have an overflowing crowd. But anyway, I appreciate Counsel's action. And as I said, going forward, an understandable work program regarding maintenance should be the first priority. And having the specific manpower and equipment to conduct that maintenance is a second part of that. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak to this item? Not to close, we're not going to close this one yet. We're going to keep this one open because we need to move the resolution, please. I have a motion for Councilwoman Hurtak to move the resolution associated with item forty-eight, and a second from Councilman Vera. Do we need a roll call vote for this one? Roll call vote, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Clendenin?
Yes.
Motion, carry, unanimous.
Thank you. Item forty-nine.
Now a motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'm sorry, now we, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. And we need to reopen the public hearings. We have a motion for Councilwoman Hurtak to reopen the public hearing, and a second from Councilman Miranda. Open.
It's already been, it's already been opened by motion.
Yes, so, and then a motion from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Counsel, McLean Evans, Assistant City Attorney. Again, item number forty-nine on your agenda is the hearing to adopt the annual role for the stormwater capital improvement assessment. As you may recall, this assessment was adopted in two thousand and nineteen for the purpose of funding capital improvement projects within the central and lower basin area. It was implemented with a scaled tier approach until the full rate of eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents per ESU was reached in two thousand and twenty-one. It has not changed since that time. And the rate for this year is still eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents per ESU. No written objections or general public comment were received on this item. And again, please remember to vote while the hearing is still open. Staff and I are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is, any questions?
She stated it twice.
Okay. Hearing no questions. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item forty-nine? State your name.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. You know, it's funny that Mr. Michelini and I rarely agree. But on this particular situation, I think it's important to point out that we could fix, we could fix the window that doesn't roll up and down. We can fix the, the belt squeaking on our car. We can fix the little bump in the bumper for a reasonable price. But that South Howard Avenue project is us going out and buying a new Mercedes without really thinking about it first. Because if you actually clean out the ditches, make sure the pumping stations work the way they're supposed to, maybe build a new pumping station or two. We have not seen any true evidence that this is going to work. Mr. B-Day was not a stormwater expert. We don't have, we have some stormwater experts, but we haven't seen them testify that it's absolutely necessary. We have, if it was really and truly the best project for the city of Tampa, you know I'd be down for it. But it stinks. It stinks to high heaven. Who wants it? Why do they want it? Whose pocketbook's getting filled up? Whose isn't? I don't know. But to fix the window on the car instead of going and buying a Mercedes, we need to fix it for everybody. And the problem is, the people who live there don't want a new car. The people who live there don't want the new car. Now, you got some who did, some who didn't buy flood insurance even though they live on a peninsula in a storm-prone area. I live in a peninsula on a storm, in a storm-prone area, and I have flood insurance since the day I bought my house. I would never live here without flood insurance. But we have to look at the big picture. We're going to spend all this money on one project that nobody can definitively show is a perfect project that will fix anything. Let's spread the love and spread the capital improvement money and fix the small pockets where it could be fixed. As a matter of fact, somebody came in here and named three streets in my community a month or so ago. And I saw next door this morning that one of the neighbors has put in for those stormwater drains down there to be cleaned three different times, and they haven't been done yet. So let's look at the practicality of, let's spend all our money, put all our eggs in one basket, or spread it out and help everybody, not just one little neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name.
Steve Michelini. Again, the capital projects need to be divided up into achievable pockets. A massive project does not solve the project, problem. All it does is transfer it to a bigger project that probably will not solve any of the problems. And you're still going to have stormwater flooding. So, you know, I agree with Stephanie Pointer. The issue is fix the areas that flood and, and design projects that specifically address those areas. You don't need a massive project. As she pointed out, it's not just the homeowners, it's all of the businesses and all of the associated industries that cannot sustain a massive project. They will not survive. So if it, if it means putting in smaller projects with the pumps and redundant backup systems, then have it. But again, as I said, the research has already shown, they have pumps that haven't been inspected or maintained for fourteen years. I have, I have some pumps in my yard. I'm not in a flood zone, but I have to maintain them every six months. I have to call for maintenance. And if we don't have the staff to do it, well, then get people under contract. And I know Counsel has been sensitive to that, but get a permanent contract. You've already heard from stormwater that they're going to engage in a, a service that's going to provide backup generators, that they're supposed to be delivered when there's a storm. Well, I hope that that's an ironclad contract and we're not competing with other areas that also needs generators or pumps. The system needs to be looked at. Again, maintenance first, construction second. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who wants to speak to item forty-nine? Do we need a motion to move the resolution?
Before I move it, I just want to put on record that I have never agreed more with Stephanie Pointer than at eleven sixteen a.m., August seventh.
I think you need Jesus.
I just want the record to show, I'd like to go ahead and move the resolution.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak. All those, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a comment?
Okay, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, no, I, I agree as well. We need to stop that boondoggle project. There's been a lot of misinformation pushed out about the administration, by the administration, justifying this stupid project. It's a waste of money, it's not going to work, it's going to disrupt neighborhoods and businesses. And the nastiness and dirty politics that's been pushed by the administration and a few of the homeowners is just disgusting. Proper maintenance would have solved the problem in those neighborhoods, and proper maintenance going forward will solve it. We still need to get in there and fix those, those drains and other problems. I went to those neighborhoods two days, the day after the hurricanes with the neighbors and saw what was happening. When the mayor's people went in, suddenly, they had all kinds of conspiracy theories and other problems. We need to fix the real problems going on and stop people's houses from flooding, not waste money on a stupid project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. Councilman Miranda?
I'm here not to defend myself, but to just say that this administration, or no other administration that I've ever worked with, has ever told me what the hell to do with my vote. Because if they did, I'd tell them to go to hell. Period. So let me clear that up for me. I take none and I give less. So I'm, I'm voting for it because the project, as I saw it designed, alleviates the problems that we have in most of this area. Is it going to be all of it? There is never going to be a problem that can be solved in the city of Tampa for all of anything regarding stormwater. You know why? Because the bay that we have next to us, and the sea level that we're at, that's number one. Number two, the amount of heat that is taken this year, it's about three percent higher than last year in the bay the water is. So what am I to expect? A couple of drops? Or full-blown hurricane? And we're lucky that that hurricane, both of them that hit last time, did not hit us direct. Because the water went out instead of coming in. If it was to come in, you and I wouldn't be speaking here today. We'd all be flooded. So the, the life is what it is, where I live is what it is, and I'm trying to fix it as best I can. And sometimes, there's nothing is a hundred percent proof.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson.
Can I just clarify? Miranda, we're kind of like, no, I just, I just want to say, I'm voting for this because it's for renewal of the, of the, the money that's coming in. This, this money is not, we're not voting for that project or against it. When that comes up, I'll vote against it. Today, we're just voting for the money. So we can find solutions.
So we had a motion to approve the resolution from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Hurtak. I need a roll call vote, please.
Vieira?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Menaskalko?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Canan?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you. We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized unless you want to just bring it up on your...
Mr. Michalini, stop in your tracks.
Mr. Michalini.
Come to the podium, please. It's a command and performance. At 1:30, you have, Ms. Shelby, would you like to...
Yes, you have a 1:30 public hearing that the agenda states will not be heard. It's a request to withdraw. Is that your request?
Yes, it is.
Then I don't think we have to wait till 1:30, council. We could remove it from the agenda today to accept the withdrawal.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the withdrawal from Steve Michalini from Councilwoman Hurtak, a second from Councilman Vieira. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Okay, item 20 is the first staff report that we are going to hear today. Councilwoman Hurtak, would you like to lead this off?
Yes. Thank you. So, item 20, on Monday, we had a discussion about Tampa Fire Rescues, Fleet and Supply, the land we want to buy on Hillsborough Avenue. And I asked, at that time, what else did you want to put on that property? And they wouldn't say exactly what it was. But because we didn't have the supporting documents available over the weekend and we didn't get them until Monday, I hadn't read it yet, but I found it. Ms. Scharf, if you could put that on. The other thing in the scope of work they want to find is the Lowry Park Neighborhood Enhancement Staffing Vehicles and Trailers and the Lowry Park Fueling Assets, a part of the site analysis and spatial requirements. So, we found what it is they also want to put there. Problem is, we have heard that Chief Trip asked for 10 acres. This new plot is only 6.4 acres. It's barely, if it does fit, this contract right now that we're approving, item number 20, is simply approving $140,000, I believe, contract to just $141,825 contract to see if this is plausible. But what they did, the RFQ, only talked about fire rescue, only talked about fleet and supply. The scope of work that they put into on-base this week includes this, Lowry Park Neighborhood Enhancement Staffing Vehicles and Trailers. I will tell you what this is. This is the extra piece of land east of North Boulevard where currently we have these vehicles and it is slated for where the Lowry Park, I'm sorry, Zoo Tampa wants to expand. I have no problem with looking for land to move these vehicles, but I do not want us as council to be stuck in another Hannah Avenue, another Howard Avenue. One of the problems of, oh, well, maybe this isn't going to be right for fire rescue, but this will be perfect for this. I have no problem buying the land either way. What I have a problem with is saying that, well, look at this for Lowry Park fueling and staffing vehicles and trailers. I believe that we should take this line out of the scope of work. I have been told by our lawyer that that is not possible. So, in order to do that, I believe we should work behind the scenes and get this removed from this. I am not at all saying, let me finish, I am not at all saying that I have a problem with us moving this, I don't have a problem. In fact, when I talked to Chief of Staff about it, I gave him a location that he could look for to put this, these trailers and vehicles on. I think it's very important. I think we should get this stuff off of something that leads into the river. It's critical. But it is not what we asked for, it is not what we're looking for. And then additionally, this morning, we got an email from the president of the Tampa Firefighters Union that clearly states, this was sent at 9:16 this morning, "This land needs to remain 100% for fire and fire only. I urge you to protect this intent and reject any effort to dilute its purpose." We owe it to Tampa Fire to focus only on this. Again, this is a six-month study and Ms. Feeley came up to us and said that we have, that we're going to close on this property in a month. I have no problem buying the property, but we are focused on fire right now. And if we agree to this, my fear is that we will then move and have this property only possibly for the Lowry Park and we'll be stuck at ground zero and have to start all over again for land for fleet and supply. This is my concern. This administration talks about transparency. When I asked on Monday what else could be put on it, we were not told this. I had to find it and read it in documentation. That, to me, is not transparency and that is not this council's stated goal of focusing on fire and finding a place for fleet and supply. I understand that the park, Lowry Park needs land. I get it. And again, I have no problem with it. We can keep looking, we can buy another piece of land. It doesn't have to be this piece of land. But I think it's disingenuous to the fire, fire administration, firefighters who are counting on us to find them a place for fleet and supply so we can fix their stations.
Some of this addressed to me, just some background information. This is something we've been working on for over two years, but I want to restate what this language says. It says that the, let's see, site analysis and spatial requirements. It's not saying, and maybe Chief Bennett would be able to provide more clarification. It's just an analysis and a spatial requirements and they're evaluating this as the purpose. It's not saying this is what's going to happen, but without some of that in there, it's not, it won't happen. So, is it, will, is it, I mean, maybe Chief Bennett can provide that clarification before we go on.
And Mr. Chairman, I have to leave in two minutes and I do want to speak to this, to support it, but just whenever Chief, if I may, yeah, because I apologize.
John Bennett, Chief of Staff, I'll try and keep it to 15 seconds. This is 100% on me. When that property came available for evaluation for fire fleet and warehousing, I asked the team through CAD, I said, "Just look at the feasibility as you go through to see if we can get off that property." And then I went back into a secondary meeting and I made sure that everybody working on this project knew that number one was fire fleet and the warehouse and only if, with a terror line, that if Lowry Park can't go there, we'll figure something else out. No idea how many acres it was, it was a very simple feasibility request that worked its way into the scope, but 1,000%, and I said this in front of the fire chief, in front of CAD, in front of Lamb, that is only for fire fleet and fire warehousing as a primary focus. And if for some reason we have room, including some other things that are being looked at that are contiguous to this, let us know. And that's as far as it went. How it got formalized from there is the project side of the equation. And I agree, I think we all have the common theme of the highest, best use of property for Lowry. And we can look for other things if it doesn't fit, but it was a genuine opportunity to do more with less, that's all.
Would you be willing to take it out of the scope of work?
Only if it's not feasible. Of course I would, because the priority is fire and fire warehousing. But if for some reason, through value engineering, I mean, I look at the city as a team sport trying to make sure land use is available for its highest and best use, but I'm not the end state, I'm not subject matter expert. Alls I asked for was for feasibility. If I take it out, or we ask to take it out, it'll automatically get taken out if it doesn't work. So, it was really, before they had a project manager, it was CAD that I asked to see whether feasibility, if they come back and said no, even in the preliminary, it would have been over. So, alls we were trying to do is see if there was enough room to free up that property. If not, then we will look for something else, but we just knew Lowry Park for a history was not the highest and best use of that land for whatever we end up doing with it.
And I don't disagree, but the point is, I asked about this Monday and no one would give me a straight answer.
Well, that's unfortunate because it wasn't, there was no hidden agenda here. It was part of the discussion from day one internally. I don't know why it wasn't brought up, but that's why I'm here right now telling you. This was on me. I asked for it from day one to be studied as a feasibility only, but the priority was, and hopefully the chief had come up because I was talking to her face-to-face about number one, fire fleet, number two, warehousing. Only if there's room, we'll consider moving these functions. And staff's been looking at, but it's also a good exercise, even without this property, to take a look at that property and see if other opportunities, to your point, of there or somewhere else. So, we're all about it, but the focus and the intent was to have the highest, best use for the Lowry property park.
And I apologize, guys, I should have left. I got to go to Turkey Creek Middle School, I think it is, in Plant City for some special lease thing I promised. Be at the, really fast, Councilwoman Hurtak, I obviously want to support you on this. Couple of things, just really fast with regards to the history of this. This came about after 2023. Some of these issues were in the budget, we couldn't get the additional revenue for it. Then we moved to bond for it and it just would, if there's any chance that we're going to be bonding for Lowry Park, and again, nothing against Lowry Park, they're wonderful. I mean, I grew up going there, took my son there, loved that place, that's a special place in my heart, but we shouldn't be bonding for that and all that kind of good stuff. And then just again, it's something that we have to pay extra close attention to. And obviously, you know, Chief Bennett and everybody's very, very honest, but having lived through the apocalypse now with fire stations, with fire station 24, just want to make sure that it's done 100% because this provides the key to freeing up station nine. Now, council, I literally have to go. If there is a vote on this where I'm needed, I can be back at 1:30 or whatever, but I have to go, so my apologies sincerely, my apologies.
Chief Bennett?
If I can make two commitments to council. Number one, there was never an intention to bond anything out of the scope of what we're talking about. Number two, I can tell you that the minute this is not feasible, it's over. It was just as, it was really a strong curiosity to see if we could find and add, it wasn't to displace. I went out to station nine, I walked through there, I walked through the rehab, I walked through the, I'm a very ground zero kind of person. And alls I did was, when this started, I said, "See if it will work." That was really the extent of it. It became a scope, it became part of the plot plan, if you will. No intention to bond and if it doesn't, if it's not able to be handled within its compartmentalized portfolio, either financing, space, whatever else, then it just comes off. It was just an idea to make sure we have the highest, best use of our land. That's it.
Let me write, can you give me some, a little bit of latitude here to speak? Because I've been involved, again, I want to, because there's misinformation here. Couple of things happening. This is not about the zoo. This is about Lowry, the public land, the recreation land along the river, it's Lowry Park in a neglected neighborhood, in an area that has not seen any investment, that some decisions decades and decades ago decided to use it basically as a dumping ground in somebody's neighborhood park. And there, I don't know if everybody's walked there, there's a beautiful natural spring right there by this thing and it's, it could be a wonderful crown jewel for the city of Tampa, this park. And again, it's in one of these neglected neighborhoods that the city of Tampa's not invested in. It hasn't, it's, now, there is coincidentally something, the zoo has a proposal that possibly somewhere in the future, that it's not moving forward as far as I know right now, but they are looking at that property as expansion property. But just taking into fact that right now, we have a base, a dump and really heavy utilization in a spectacular area of town along the Hillsborough River, we're refueling vehicles around Hillsborough River. It's just environmentally just ridiculous. So, this, what this proposal was, is all about fleet and fire maintenance. When they procured the property, all they have in this language, I want to right-set this, the language is just about an analysis of the property. It's not committing to build anything, it's just looking at the scope and scale. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Fleet and fire maintenance is number one. Number one, number one, number two, number three, number four, number five. But if, when they do the analysis, they can see if they're going to do the analysis. If it works, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And we'll look elsewhere to take this stuff off of Lowry Park. But this is, this is nothing more than keep your options open. And you know what? Shame on the city if we didn't keep our options open, because then you're being, you're being blind, we have blinders on, looking at something because if you have an opportunity and you have adjacent properties, you have a scope of the project, you've got to keep the scope as broad as possible so that you can possibly expand it if you need to. If you narrow it out the gate, there's no going back, so this is just keeping your options open. Thank you. Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I think the issue is transparency and we know, even though the mayor has talked about transparency, it's a cover for the fact that this administration's has never been transparent. That's why the public doesn't trust them and they blame us for it to a certain extent. But look at this item, it says that it's about new, I mean, I'm looking at number 20, it's about new fire fleet maintenance building. It doesn't say anything about the zoo or moving anything else around. So, the public looking at this would have no idea that that's what it is. And we know that all the time. The other day, we were talking about the budget and I asked the CFO and the other folks some basic questions like, "How much is our total debt?" And they didn't know. But then we find out, I haven't researched that, but typically when they say we don't know, we find out that they did know, but they didn't want to tell us, or they were told not to tell us. And this is not how we build trust with the public. We need to work with the public. There are, I think, maybe two or three little springheads in that area. I've taken a walk through there. One of the things we know is the river is heavily polluted, we need to fix that. The zoo or the city, somebody can work to better clear those springheads so that we can add more fresh water there. But the issue here is that, is that we need to teach the administration a lesson about how they need to be transparent for the public and for us. I think we should just vote no. By the way, there's only five of us here and if two of us vote no, we don't have the votes anyway, so we can go quickly to that. But the other thing I want to say is I object strongly to this concept of highest and best use. We're a government agency that serves the public, we're not a commercial real estate company. This is the excuse that the development community uses to try to get rid of the cruise industry or the port industry. If you use the highest and best use that the commercial property people use, then you would convert all of our parks to condos, because that's what, that's what these few people want to do. They want inside deals so they can convert everything to condos. This is not, our economy is multifaceted, it's not just based on condos. Condos are important, but it's just one part. We need to look at, the test we need to use is, how best does it serve the public? Does, sure, condos will generate more, have alarm taxes, but would we rather have Curtis Six and Park or we'd rather have condos there? We can get more money, the highest, best use is putting condos and Curtis Six and Park. How it best serves the public is to keep it as a park. We should never say highest and best use again. That is a term that is used to not represent the community's interests. I think we should just vote no and have the administration come back. They need to be more transparent, not just on this, but a lot of things. They hide information from us all the time. Many of the things we know about Howard Avenue project, for example, and these other boondoggle projects, is that the public is doing public records and they find all the conflicts of interest, the insider dealing, the dirty politics where staff are texting and emailing community members, riling them up against us. I mean, it's horrible the things that are going on. We need to say no and we need to bring good government back to the city for the next year and a half.
Thank you. Let me see, you can hear from a couple of councilmen first. Councilman Miranda?
I understand what you said, Mr. Chairman, is correct. That area there has been used for refueling and dumping and picking up from a lot, one or two city divisions for at least 60 years. As far as I can remember, that's been going on at that location. So, it's got to be somewhere along the line cleaned up before you do anything. But I'm just there to listen. If I thought that somebody in this city had done all the violations that I just heard, I would ask for a complete investigation by the Florida Department, FDLE, or any other outside source, because that's, if that's the case, bring them all in, let's investigate everything. Because I don't like to be here to talk about, not that it's me, but I don't like any induendals against my government. And if all that is true, I'm asking for an investigation. If they got the guts to say it, they got the guts to prove it. So, I want a complete investigation of what I just heard.
Councilman Menaskalko?
Thank you. I mean, in supporting this, it keeps our options open and it doesn't bind our hands, is from what I'm understanding. And I know that property very well, on the east side of Boulevard, it is a dump and it's going to need major environmental remediation and who knows what else. And on the other side, it used to be Ferryland, you know, it was a, which is now, you know, it's a parking lot, it's another, you know, like an employee entrance for the zoo. It used to be a nice area. You know, now it's just underutilized. And that specific parcel there, and we're talking about fire rescue here at the end of the day, you know, and Hillsborough Avenue and whatnot, but this has come up. You know, access to the river, access to the park, access to the community. We keep our options open. If it doesn't work, like you said, we don't move forward with it, but at least we're looking at this.
I see Ms. Colina came online. Do you want to hear what she has to say? No? Okay, Councilwoman Hurtak?
So, I also want to say, I did get an email from Ms. Colina and this, again, we're talking at 6.4 acre site and then I believe, Chief Bennett, you told me 1.5 acres is unusable because of stormwater?
I didn't give you a number, but I know that the plot plan involves, the initial feedback I got from CAD was that because of the lay of the land, the parking and stormwater management, that it probably would not be feasible.
Okay, so, no, 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 but you said that there was a portion that was going to have to be for stormwater?
Correct.
So, we're talking a 6.4 acre piece of land, which is smaller. She asked for 10. Then, these are the Lowry Park assets. Office trailer, lawnmower canopy, Dale's shop, Dale's open cages. So, all of this stuff. We have 12, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 38, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44 vehicles. In addition. So, what I'm saying is, it doesn't seem like there's even enough room to put fire and then you want to say, "Well, let's look at it for 44 additional vehicles plus buildings." And that's what this is about. This isn't saying, "Hey, you know, we'll see what's there," because quite frankly, I don't think it's going to be enough for fire, but it might be enough just for this. And that's what we're, that's what we don't want. We want to know if this is enough for fire. We need to move on fire. Yes, do we want to take stuff off the Lowry Park River? Absolutely. But that's not the primary goal here. The primary goal is to get fleet and supply moved. So, what it sounds like to me is quite frankly, that we're going to add this in and, oh, it's, we're just looking, but if we're just looking, we're going to be another year without having started fleet and supply.
Ms. Colina?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, council. If I could, I'd actually like to take you a little bit down memory lane on how we got here. So, in September of 2024, Contract Administration Department issued an RFQ and the RFQ was titled "Related, Associated, and Subsequent Work for the New Fire Support Service..."
Can you speak a little bit closer to your microphone, Ms. Colina? Because we're having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, so sorry. And would you like for me to start from where, the title of it again?
No, you're good.
Okay, and it ends, "Including Fleet Maintenance, Storage, Supply, and Associated Facilities Assessment." And submissions were due for that RFQ on October 31 of '24. It went through the CCNA process, three firms presented on December 20 of '24, and Wilder and Associates was selected. They were the, you know, the one that was selected during that. And the agreement that is before you today is simply allowing them, the subject matter experts, to do the programming for building in sight and seeing what the required space is for fleet that services fire and supply. I will also say, and Councilwoman Hurtak, I've heard you say a couple of times, that the fire chief asked for 10 acres. With all due respect, that is not her area of expertise. Wilder and Associates has a demonstrated track record. They did a similar facility, they designed and constructed a similar facility in Charlotte County. And we are not the subject matter experts. And so, we are leaning on the subject matter experts to tell us what we truly need to service our fleet based on the number of their vehicles, to provide ample storage for them based on what they have. And so, we are leaning to the experts, or on the experts, rather, to let us know what we can or can't do on the site. what we can or can't do on the site. And as Chief Bennett mentioned, we are looking, and Councilwoman Carlson has said multiple times, do a master plan, do your homework, do it. And that's what we're doing. We're looking to see, what do we really need? And as I mentioned on Monday, right out of the gate, you're going to have two departments on site, because I want everyone to remember, the fleet maintenance team is logistics and asset management. That is my department. We service fire. We're going to be there with fire. Fire currently shares space with the police department for supply, and at, at the fleet site, we share with the fire department. The city does that citywide. Look at TMOB, Old City Hall, CMOB. I can go on and on. Even at Big Blue, TNI was located there. So we try to optimize space where possible. And honestly, this is not a decision the administration's making. We're going to lean to our experts. And all we're doing is taking this RFQ that went through the CCNA process and getting the agreement with Wilder and Associates in line so that we can afford. And that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Kalina. Mr. Bennett, you have anything to add?
I do. Again, John Bennett, Chief of Staff, just address a few things. One, I want to make sure I clarify what highest and best use. That park and its lay down equipment, logistics, and fuel is at risk near the river, regardless of where it ends up. You know, when you have 30,000 gallons of fuel there, we haven't been hit yet. If that river crests, then of course, that becomes a logistical challenge. So it's not just what that can be used for, it's the functions that are there that are at risk. So that's my version of highest best use is for service. Not, I'm not a real estate expert, nor do I plan on being one. So that's part of it. The second part of it is that I want to make sure that everybody understands, the focus is fire, fleet, and warehousing. So if 100% of what you're voting on today goes to that, I'm fine with that, because that's what really mattered. That's how it got started. That's how the, the, the assessment and the feasibility. This was simply a feasibility question. And wherever that tear line happens, whether it's before, during, or after, we will figure out Lowry Park. That is not the focus. I said it in the internal meetings. I'm saying it to the public. It was just an ancillary request to see if, because we don't often come across acreage in the city. So it's very simple to figure this out another way, to make sure that these two priorities happen. That's it. I'm done.
Councilwoman Herter.
Thank you. And I think we should wait till Councilman Vera comes back to vote on it, because he asked. So, so moved, yeah, to postpone this item 20 until after Councilman Vera returns after lunch.
Okay. We have a motion to, to move item 20 until after Councilman Vera comes back from lunch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, do you, do you want a break for lunch and then come back?
It is a lot of, well, I see, I see Tampa PD is here. Should we let them?
That's a pretty quick one, overall.
Can I say one last thing?
On which item?
On that one we just closed.
Well, we're going to bring it back up. You want to say it when we bring it back up?
Yeah. No, just, if I could.
Councilman Carlson.
Wilder Architects is, is, is the company that's, it's a great firm. Ms. Kalina was talking about their expertise. Great firm. You know, Larry Wilder was a fantastic person. Nope, no, nothing I question has anything to do with Wilder or their reputation. They're a great firm.
Okay, thank you. I, I would suggest we go ahead and move on to item 52.
Yeah, I think we can do 52 and probably even, yeah, probably it.
So 52.
So I wanted to just kick this off by saying that we had a robust discussion on Monday about funding for this. That is not what this asked for. This motion is just a project report on where we are, the types of things that are going to go in it. We are not talking about funding this, or that is not the intent of this staff report. I just wanted to set the table.
Good morning. Start with your name, please.
Good morning. I'm Assistant Chief Ruth Kate with the Tampa Police Department, and I have with me today Major Patrick Messmer, also from the Tampa Police Department, and our legal advisor, Michael Schmidt. Should you have any questions for him? So thank you, Council, for having us here today to update you on this project. The current approved capital budget is $41,296,000. That's where we're at right now. What have we spent on this project so far? $6.2 million. That has been used for the purchase of the property at 5,005 North Howard Avenue, the design plans and creation of the project, permitting, the tree study, the pond study, engineering, and the project manager, which we are also using Wilder Architecture to help us. I would like to show you a display of our parking spaces. There was a question on what will the parking spaces be at the new facility. So I'll put that on the ammo for you. Everybody could see that. So currently, the parking will be for 84 vehicles, which includes employee parking, large high vehicle storage, and charging stations for EVs, and bicycle spaces. There will be 30 additional tandem spaces for vehicle storage, which I'm going to show you a color one, which may help a little bit more. But this is the overall plan so far. Where we will help save some money, which is for the tandem vehicles right there, that will be gravel. That will actually not be paved. The employee parking, the main employee parking will be here, and there will be employee parking here. But these are our overflow of vehicles that we already have, that employees don't normally drive, like our command post, the sharp, you know, high water vehicles. Those vehicles will go there. We also will have EV chargers, and we will accommodate ADA parking. The general public will park in this area here. So that was for the parking. The square footage assumption for the entire project is 47,594 square foot. I'll put that back up. This is the overall site plan of the entire project. This is the, the pond and all of the parking, and this is the overall building there. Updated construction costs. This is currently a design-build bid, which is unique. We will not know the exact cost until the bid is accepted. The estimated cost still remain around the $40 million is where we're at. Before I go further, I would like Major Messmer to talk about a list of positions that will be moving from TPD headquarters and the temporary impound lot at Crockett's.
Morning, Council. Major Patrick Messmer, Tampa Police Department. So I initially took lead on this project back in 2021, when I was in a previous assignment, when I learned that we were being moved out of our existing impound lot due to the solid waste relocation, which I think everybody knows about. So there was a list of positions requested of who's going to be moving from headquarters and the impound lot over to this new facility. There's going to be about 51 employees. That's going to be our NIBIN, our National Integrated Ballistics Network technicians, our fingerprint ID technician, all of our forensics personnel, and all of our evidence and impound lot personnel. And we have always staffed two facilities for evidence. We, currently, we have a temporary impound lot. Previously, we staffed the 34th Street impound lot. So one of the things that I did back in 2021 was conduct a cost benefit analysis about this as well. So we staff between eight and nine positions at the secondary location. So by centralizing this to one location, we're going to be able to eliminate through attrition, or reclassify positions, move them into other positions where we have vacancies, eight positions. So if we assume that's going to be a 40-year life, lifetime of this structure, which is not unreasonable considering the, the age of our headquarters building, the age of the training facility that's undergoing some construction in the future down to 34th Street, that savings over that 40-year period is going to be about $42, $43 million when you factor in about a 4% increase in employee cost and benefits annually, if we can eliminate those eight positions. So potentially, it will be a cost-neutral project at the, at the end of the life of the structure.
Assistant Chief Ruth Kate, again. So I have discussed where we're at in the permitting progress with Abby Feely, and she assures me, we reviewed all the permits that are outstanding, that the final permit should be approved by the end of August, at which time we can put the project out to bid. Once we accept a bid and we're ready to break ground, it will be approximately 16 months for completion of the project.
Okay. Councilman Maniscalco?
Thank you very much, Assistant Chief Kate. And I like, I like saying that, because you do a great job. And this is, this is a major responsibility, because this is a historic project. I'm glad to see the investment in West Tampa, really Wellswood, because it's in an underutilized area, you know, that, that little corridor. But, you know, it's a great project. It's needed. I understand. I've toured, you know, what's right down the street here on the seventh floor. It's, for a city like Tampa, it's outdated. My concern is how we fund it. And you mentioned it's around the 40 millions. You mentioned around the 41 or $42 million in savings. The thing is, when you bond something, what you pay in interest, it just defeats that entire purpose. I had a brief conversation with our CFO, Mr. O'Harrow, to look at, how can we not bond this? Looking at the CIT, looking at what's coming in that renewal, just to, to be good stewards of taxpayer funding, because I want to see this happen. I just want to save as much money as possible. When we looked at the Hannah Building, you know, departments, some departments were moving in there and were saying, well, we're not paying rent in these other places. But the cost of that facility, plus what was bonded in the interest, it defeated that argument. Oh, we're paying a million dollars a year in rent, but how much are we paying the banks in interest over the lifetime of the financing? Moving forward with this, I know this is not a vote, this is just a status update. My questions are going to be, and the scrutiny that I'm going to put is, how can we save money and be financially responsible in getting this done? I spoke to the chief of police, and I know with the CIT, there's renewals for the police, you know, the, the new police cars coming in. The concern was, you know, if, what's, what, with what is done with the CIT money, and if we look at funding this with the revenue that we get, will that affect how we replace the new police cars? And I know, I know the vehicles that the police have, they're, they have a lifespan, and those things run all day. They're not regular cars. They're racing and, and high mileage and all sorts of stuff. So moving forward in the next discussion, when this does come from a vote, when it does come up for a vote, I want to look at how we can utilize CIT, what other funding sources, and at the last resort, if we have to bond, to bond the least amount of, and I want to avoid bonding altogether. And I had asked a question, or made the comment about the Greco administration with the original CIT post 1996, 97, how the police substations, like on Tampa Bay and other, how they were funded. And I, and I think, and I'm going to call Mayor Greco and ask him, I think they were paid with CIT money. CIT is a blessing. I know it's a 15-year renewal, but if we can, if we can do the, the, the most good with it, because it's a dedicated funding source, and we can pay for this. The chief mentioned, a new police headquarters, $400 million. I don't even want to think about that discussion. You know, it's a great, it's an old building, but I'd rather renovate Big Blue, because it is historically significant. I had a conversation about this yesterday with our Arts Council. But in moving this forward, again, I want to avoid bonding and try to fund it with, you know, general revenue, with CIT, with anything. The last resort is giving money to the banks, because it defeats that $42 million in savings, where we're just going to pay it in interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Maniscalco. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the report. Councilwoman Herter?
I just want to say thank you so much for providing this information and for chatting with me ahead of time. I agree with Councilman Maniscalco, but I do appreciate the update, the information, where we're going with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I just want to say one last word. Remember, we are a growing city, and we were just recently ranked the sixth safest of our size across the nation. And that's because of the hard work that the police officers do. When we think our evidence and property room, we need to consider post-conviction relief. It's very important that these defendants have this evidence available to them until the expiration of their sentence. That's why we have such of the volume. And as we continue to grow, I mean, we owe it to the community not to have one case lost. So very important. And once we move evidence and forensics, that is the bulk of what is at headquarters. The rest of us can probably hotel anywhere. You're talking about detectives and administrative staff. The cost of building a police headquarters goes down tremendously. And we would not rebuild this part. This would be separate. It helps with ventilation. We don't have the outside storage like we used to have at the, what we formerly used as the impound lot. We are getting out of the impound lot business. A lot of the statutes have changed on impounding of cars. That's why the parking lot is not as big. We were very conservative on the tree study and the pond mitigation. So, you know, we want to be good neighbors in Wellswood, and we have spoken to them also, which will be our neighbors. So, you know, we're just very proud of the entire project and how it's going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson, I believe you have a ceremonial thing you would like to do?
Wait, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to add.
Kate, hold on a second.
Just want to add two cents to the conversation. It's, it's not what you buy today, and what you spend today, is that you have to realize, another 20 years from now, 30 years from now, what is that going to cost? That's never been said. No one's addressed that. No one says, what if nothing happens? Where are you going to go? So there's a lot of important questions that have not, not been answered. Yeah, bonding is what? I don't know what the market is today, four and a half, four, three quarters, whatever it is. You think that interest rate is going to stay like that for the next 20 years? I don't think so.
No, sir, Councilman. I, I don't think. But more importantly, I don't want 20 years from now, a guilty person to be set free because the evidence was not there.
I understand that, and that's what I'm getting at. That's why, I've said that before. Just one person.
One person.
One person. I said that before.
Yeah.
So I'm not afraid to understand what's going on. I may not like it personally, but I understand that big business, General Motors and everybody is big businesses, they also have a credit line. When they can make a bargain, they take it and they run with it, because sometimes even big, big business needs immediate cash. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you all. Enjoy your afternoon. Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, just quickly, Adam Burden.
Adam.
This is his last meeting, because he has to go back to USF, I mean FSU, sorry, as his, as his, I guess, future roommate mentioned last week. But he's, he's came in the beginning of the summer as an intern, and then my aide had some health issues, and he stepped right in and has been working as a temp for a couple of months now, and has been doing a great job. So I just wanted to personally thank him and, and wish him well, and, you know, we'll stay in touch. And he knows that anything we can do to help him in the future, we will.
Thank you.
Council, would you like to say something?
He's a symbol.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
So what are, what are your plans? What are you, what are you studying? And, and what year are you?
So I'm going into my sophomore.
State, state your name.
Adam Burden. Apologies. Thank you for having me, Council. Adam Burden, I just said that. I'm going to be an accounting major. I'm going into my sophomore year. And I am also doing a minor in political science. As I started working here over the summer, I've grown very invested into politics. So I do think there is a future for me, not necessarily in city work, but definitely, definitely government-related. So I am also very finance-interested. So I do want to do something with money, and so that comes into the accounting part.
You want to make money. Councilman Miranda?
Well, you know, it's like the old saying is, students that go to school make straight A's, and they become lawyers, they become judges. Those that go to college and make a C in law, they become millionaires. So you in accounting is the same thing in a way with numbers. So you got no problem ahead of your life. Just keep doing what you got to do and enjoy it. Because, you know, it's going to be hard now that you got all that kind of, one player can play for you one year, then he's gone. It's getting to be point that it's not a team anymore. It's who you can buy to play for you anymore. So that's how it is in sports. So what am I going to say? Do I like it? Absolutely not.
Does that saying go on, to say those that flunk become politicians?
No. Those that get Cs become.
Those that lose their hair become politicians.
Charlie, which were you?
I don't know.
Which were you, the A's?
I was a D student.
A what?
A D student.
D student.
No.
I was going to ask you. I was going, now I know.
Councilman Maniscalco.
So how old are you?
Thankfully, I get A's, so.
How old are you?
Uh, 20.
That's great. You know, I was thinking about, because I was 20 the other day. I'm 41 now. But the most important thing is your education and learn about money. I have a couple of friends of mine and, and from when they were young, one's in finance and one's not in finance. But everything is about understanding how money works, saving and investing for your future, because time flies, number one. Your education, your future, retirement, finances. I wanted to be an attorney. And the goal was, and I, I even applied to go to law school. The goal was to be an attorney and then run for public office. I always had my, my sights on city, local, because I was inspired by Mayor Greco, former, you know, former mayor, city council member Charlie Miranda, because that's, that's, those are who I knew growing up. And, but anything is possible. But again, you know, build that foundation, focus on yourself, because it'll be a, a better future for you. So you talked about finance, talked about government. There's just so many opportunities. And, and never be scared. Never be scared. You know, don't hesitate, because what is it, fortune favors the bold? Just, even if you may fail, don't be too scared that you don't take that first step. So best of luck to you, sir. And thank you for joining us here. Thank you.
My advice I will give. Failure is only for those who do not get up and run and try again.
Thank you, Councilman Miranda. Okay, Adam, it's been a pleasure having you back there. You always have a smile on your face. You're always so friendly. And we're, we're actually going to miss you. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. Hopefully, we'll see you again.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Take care. Enjoy your lunch.
Thank you. And thank you specifically, Councilmember Carlson, for having me. This has been an incredibly valuable experience. I've learned so many, so many great things from countless emails and scheduling, and it And it's truly been one of the most valuable experiences of my life, so thank you very much.
Just don't take advice from him about movies.
By the, by the way, he doesn't talk about it, so you might not know, but he actually lived in Singapore for four years, so you all can get a second opinion.
Very, very wild coincidence, we both did.
I'm jealous, I've never actually been.
Thank you very much.